All right, uh, public speaking order. This is the special meeting of the budget evaluation. April sixteenth. Uh, roll call. Looks like all primary members, District One is not in here currently. But he else is here. Notice this meeting was properly posted on April nine. Let's go ahead and skip down to item number six. Discussion possible action regarding follow-up questions. Any F Y twenty-five, twenty-six needs is already been presented. John, you want to go ahead and present your update real quick?
Sure.
Did you get one for five minutes? Captain, did you get one?
Sure.
I did. That's important. Did you give one? All right. John, um, sorry, pharmacy.
Sure. Um, as a struck updated pharmacy budget, remove the references to social services throughout the document. Replaced it with county pharmacy. I removed the hundred sixty-three thousand for senior living center. Since that's going to be moved to, um, commissioners.
Is there a motion received that updated estimate need for general fund sixteen county pharmacy? Got a motion second. All those in favor say aye. Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Guys have it. John employee benefits.
Sure. This is for our departmental budget. Um, as a reminder, our computers are going out of date this next fiscal year. There's no changes. So I added, um, six thousand onto the budget for new computers. Uh, and costs of two thousand each.
Perfect. Is there a motion to receive the updated estimate needs for employee benefits two six five? You got a motion second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Uh, is having. Thank you, John. If you don't mind, can you guys keep like a list of the estimate needs that are redone and resubmitted? And just send out a list to everybody that way. We all know. Take this one out of the book and put them in. We don't get lost. Which ones have been? All right, uh. Let's move up to item number three. Discussion possible action. I'm sorry, not three. Number five. Discussion possible action regarding departments F Y twenty-five, twenty-six estimate needs. We have got the criminal justice authority here and we are five minutes ahead of schedule. So let's try to set it. Who's presenting?
No pressure.
See? Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, um, for the next fiscal year, the grand follow budget for criminal justice before giving forty-seven point three million. And for our special revenue, we are estimating to like five point one million. And that later the budget request forty-two point two million. That's what we requesting. Um, so that's a difference of that additional eight point two million compared with current fiscal year. And, uh, I'm just going to give a highlight on why we need eight point two million. The main one is for. So the first one I have here is the outside medical cost increase. And, uh, that's going to be a one point five six million. And, uh.
What line is that?
Uh, Dr. Medical Days.
Can you hold up just one second? Some others are trying to find everything.
It's in the bedroom.
Yeah, I'm in that.
It's in the middle. But it's half, half which better probably.
It's, um, at the end of the B O C C.
I'd say it's about halfway between transfer and T V days. It's just before you're being cornered. Where you at right now? Yeah.
Very last one of that section.
So of the, uh, the first one is the one point five six. This for the expense.
It's five four oh three cents.
Five four oh three cents. And the next one is.
Hang on one second. So you're estimating a one and a half million dollar increase, which is, I mean, almost triple what your budget was this year, right? What if your average has been this year? I, I guess what I'm getting at is, why are you estimating that large increase in that?
Morning. Big reason is it's all site and then cost.
So this year in your outside medical cost, looks like you budgeted eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Is that correct? Are you guys going to have enough money in that eight forty to get through this year in outside medical?
Yes. Yep. We, we, when Oklahoma City pay all the bills, then I should be able to balance all that in this year.
Are your outside medical bills going to be higher than eight hundred and forty thousand that you budgeted for this year?
Yes, it's protecting to be high. Yeah.
By how much? Do you have like an average monthly expenditure?
Yeah, the, for the last four months has been around two hundred thousand. Oh, but two hundred forty thousand. That's what it's been averaging a lot higher the last four months. Yeah. Why is that?
We have an outside vendor, Heritage, that processes our medical claims and they have paid bills that should not have been paid. And we've got somebody in place now that's reviewing past medical bills to see if we can get credit or reimbursement for those bills that we should not have paid.
And how much are we talking that that's should not have been paid?
I can't give you a figure right now. Um, I think it's around a little bit over a million dollar that thing that we shouldn't pay for those.
In outside medical?
It's for the pre-existing condition.
So that's part of the, the reason why your average has been higher in the last four months?
Right.
Okay, so you're saying that you got somebody in to fix billing errors or whatever because you were being billed for stuff that you shouldn't be billed for. Yet you're using those averages to drive your budget requests for next year. But you just said that it shouldn't have been that high. That's why you have somebody in trying to give us low. You follow me?
We're trying to get credit for past bill and, and I'm still moving this and I'm still fixing it. Um, and part of that also is they couldn't pay probably a ten percent increase in medical costs in the last year.
Get that, but ten percent bills in comparison to the three hundred percent. You're tripling. You, you budgeted.
They didn't see in all the medical.
Were, were they able to work out deals? You think, do they have contracts? You think the whole of my prisoners?
Uh, we have no idea what time because there's not much information there to share with us.
Okay.
A lot of it during the transition from, when we took over the medical and.
And how much that prisoner cap is also pharmacy cost?
Uh, it's about forty to fifty thousand a month.
Okay.
For medical costs, yeah.
So just so I'm clear, you're basing your two point four million dollar estimate?
Based on the trend that, that when I did the estimate of needs, uh, a little bit over a month ago and, and that's what the number was showing. So I use that number as, as when I did estimate on it and then we just discovered all these the paths. Or preschool month also. And now, so now, now we know that this is just because we, we put it in here. So we just have to present it as is. And now to let you know that, that, uh, we are fixing this problem and then, and, and when it comes in September or during the supplement and we may not need this month, but we just want to.
But if we've already budgeted, that's, we need to get, get down to that right now. I mean, if you already know that, that two hundred thousand dollars a month is not accurate, we need to know that. And you probably should get this.
We don't have the exact number. We're still reviewing all the bills that we have paid so far. So it's a lot of bills that, that, that we have a medical staff reviewing them and, and we're looking at different options out there. Like, like make sure they're filling us the white code for jails in, in detainees. And so we are reviewing all that. It takes a lot of time and, and right now we're working on that. And we don't really have a number to, exact number to tell you the truth for that. So.
But this, so this is something that your medical provider, yeah, medical provider, they were performing this function?
Yeah, reviewing those bills that we, we have paid so far to see which one is not, we shouldn't have paid.
When Turnkey left, who took over reviewing medical bills?
We had to bring someone in to, well, Heritage had been reviewing one, from what I understand from my, should you say. And we were paying, we were paying for bill that we should not have been. And we only discovered that probably two months ago since I've been in, in place.
With whoever was doing it and paying bills that shouldn't have been paid, was there some provision in a contract that would allow us to recoup? Where they had made an error and then that you don't get credit?
We, when we got the bills, when we took over and then we forwarded all the bills and, and they processed that.
So Heritage, Heritage sent the bills that shouldn't have been paid and now they're working on trying to. I thought I understood that somebody else had sent bills that shouldn't have been paid and now Heritage is fixing the problem.
Right. Cause every bills that we sent to Heritage, because those bills will not review either if they are pre-existing condition or not. So we, we didn't know that. And when, when every bills were handed to Heritage, Heritage paid all, all the bills at that time. And, uh.
So did you change the scope of the contract then to where they weren't just paying bills? Now they're reviewing bills whether they should be paid or were they supposed to be reviewing them before they paid them initially?
So the way I understood it was Heritage initially got the bill. I don't know what kind of review process they had in place. But they were paying whatever the bill was and then charging us their review. And since I've been in place, we have discovered that they were paying bills we should not have been paying because of pre-existing conditions or whatever the case might be. And we, I have, uh, put someone in place to review all those claims that Heritage has previously paid. Now, I don't know how long Heritage had been in place paying those bills, but we've gone back for probably a couple of months, wouldn't you say? So maybe longer than that. Since October. Since October. So we've got all the bills from last year that we are still in the process of reviewing. We have, uh, a person in place that's, just one person's reviewing all the bills from last October. So it is going to take a little bit of time to get through and make sure that they're all coded correctly. Whether or not they should have been paid at whatever rate they should have been paid.
So they're going back and looking backwards.
Right.
Or whatever. And what are you doing with claims right now that you have current?
We are reviewing them before we send it to Heritage. We are holding everything back until we know for sure what we're doing and to make sure it's done correctly. So right now we, we haven't sent anything to Heritage since we discovered the mistake.
So you're not paying medical bills?
Uh, we are, but it's, it's, we are putting it on, holding on until we find out. And, uh, we have a few bills that we have reviewed so far and we are in the process of sending it to Heritage and those are the bills that we should, we need, we should pay. Yeah.
Is this the same person that's looking backwards that's doing the current as well?
There's a reimbursement of possibly a million dollars. Where does that come from? Go back to them. Just on the front end of this, on this S one E. Yeah. And then if there's a reimbursement of another million, then it's really good to handle that.
Yeah. It's, my heartburn is coming in. That you're at, you're, you're budgeting three times the amount you budgeted last year for this one line item. And the one line item, you're asking for a two point four million dollar budget in that line item for next year. You just mentioned that the last four months has been two hundred thousand. So it seems to me like you just took the two hundred thousand times twelve months to get your two point four million.
The last four months is definitely high. We, we paid, I think, one of them on six hundred thousand. And then, uh, the bill that we're paying next week, that's about two hundred.
Okay. Well, you said a minute ago that.
Right, right. Yeah, the four month and it's, it's trending up and I use that number and, and, and then I look at the previous month when, how much we paid. And I come up with a number just to go in between the numbers, you know?
That's six hundred thousand, right? Sure. Is that, is that like a bunch of backlog? I'm sure is that just?
We had some backlogs. We had some backlog that, that interrupted the service of the hospitals of taking our residents because, uh, because of some of the issues that Turnkey didn't pay. And there's some backlogs that, that we had to pay on.
So hospitals are not taking folks that you need sent to a hospital because you haven't paid bills.
Turnkey. Yeah. Turnkey, when they were doing the medical claims.
How long has Turnkey been out of the facility?
It's not helpful.
And hospitals just now are stopping?
No, no, it was during, during that time when, when, that's why we had to pay all those bills and then get everything updated on the current and the ways that we're not delaying any.
And on some of these claims, some of these high claims that we're paying, are, are we pursuing medical O Rs on these individuals?
Yes, and that's a process in itself.
Right. I understand, but we, we are at least making that up.
Every opportunity we can. And, uh, in fact, I've met with the judges last week. We have another meeting scheduled for the district attorney's office and the public defense office.
Awesome. Thank you.
So the, the approach that we've been kind of taking with everybody thus far is looking at increases and decreases in, in budget requests from previous years, as well as kind of highlighting areas that you think are important for us to know about. That's all estimate needs that we, that we looked at. Our budget is extremely tight, right? I mean, we get a little over three percent more on average in general fund year to year, which isn't that much. I mean, that barely, um, covers and in some instances doesn't even cover, um, just the increased costs of doing business, right? Um, so we've got to be very deliberate and intellectual when we're looking at increases and increases and that kind of stuff. And the, see, I, I get what you're saying, but I mean, to me, when you said that you used the two hundred thousand, cause that was, I'm just saying what you said earlier, your average over the last four months. But then you also said that those bills aren't right. You're having to relook at them. You know those bills are high because we paid stuff that we shouldn't have been paying, yet you're going to use that number as an estimate for us to take resources and plug over there and then maybe try to adjust it in September.
No, we just found out about this the last, the last month. And, and that's why when I did this estimate, it was before that, prior to that. That's why I use that number based on the number what I see, what we pay. And now, and that's what we pay nowadays.
But now that you know, you're talking about going back all the way to.
Right. And I don't have any idea. Cause I don't have the, the final number, the two, the actual number, because I'm not going to use that because this is done and then that's why we are here to explain. And then we may not, if, if the problem is fixed, we know that it shouldn't be that high. It will, will not be that high.
Well, but here's the issue though. You were moving on from this item to go talk about other stuff without even mentioning any of this stuff to us. That in the last month, you've noticed that this number may not be accurate. It might be high. We're going to adjust. I mean, if we wouldn't have, if I would have asked you the question about it, we wouldn't even know about this. I mean, we have to know these things whenever we're trying to make these determinations. And if you find that, that there's an error in your estimate needs, I mean, we've had this most years with, with your estimate. You guys go back and redo them and resubmit them. I mean, you could run that month. I, I understand that you don't have solid numbers, but I definitely, according to you, know that the two hundred thousand dollars a month, the two point four million is an inflated number, right?
Yeah, and. I, it's a big number. I knew that's why I brought this number here. I knew it should be a discussion. That's why we're here prepared and so to explain. And.
Okay.
Look at while we're down on prisoner care. The white's prisoner care, the line above it, as compared to the one we're talking about prisoner care.
One with the base contact, contract, Chris D for like when Turnkey was there. So that contract's always done in two phases. There's a base contract and then there's an off-site. It's just called off-site care, but it also includes pharmacy cost. And so. Yeah. And so, but at the same time too, that base contract also includes the F Ts, the, the provide would have had. That's why you see such a substantial decrease in that prisoner care, but then also a substantial increase in the salaries. Because now that, now that we own the employees, they had to move from, from an M and O account to a, to an actual salaries and benefits area.
That was very good to know, I think.
And to that then, what is the exact salary cost that we're paying for medical related staff in the facility now?
Uh, so we, medical. For F Ts is four point seven eight million.
Is that just salary or is that benefit number as well?
Just the salary. And the, the overall number with benefits, uh, the overtime and there's some overtime, all of benefit is seven point one million. For salary.
Seven point one million?
So that's, that's more than what you had for prisoner care with your contract?
Right? The prisoner care is eight point, eight point one, eight.
Right. If you move seven point one up to salary and fringe, then you're still asking for one point one.
Yeah. It's still one point one. One point one that includes like off the lap, x-rays, medical supplies, and those are all the cost. But that was included in the prison care, in the prison care before. So that's what I'm saying, where are. It's still, it's still going to be under prison care because those are, those are just for the prison care is for the Chinese only. And so that's why the one point one is still there, what we.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I, I should restate, if you take the seven point one that you're paying now for medical staff, plus the one point one that you're having to, to continue to pay, that's eight point two million. Plus they were the ones that were submitting the bills and not being, being issues of the however many millions of dollars that have been paid that maybe shouldn't have been paid. Looks like it's costing more.
Yes. And, uh, and, uh, like overtime and I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I think Turnkey probably didn't pay overtime. But because we pay overtime, and so we have some overtime expenses on that too. That's why that's seven point one.
But Turnkey also had some benefit as well, but you know, for John, you know, center medical staff, I think that's helpful. So I think there's a lot of people, you know, when you, when we take on those employees, we absorb all the benefits. There's, as I said, when, when previously we didn't have to do that. I mean, there's surely some, some extraneous costs that maybe not were thought about, you know, when, when you jump from a cabinet, it's somewhat well, you know, found me to.
And I'm pretty sure, and I'm pretty sure we held by better benefits than Turnkey. So that probably caused.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're, we're looking at the bottom line here. A lot of turnkey's employees are probably D R N, I'm sure. But no benefits attached on. So we did, since we're talking about the medical, um, we were told three or four months ago that you guys had an R F D that was going out for medical providers. Has that gone out? Has it come back? Have you guys?
We got one person that responded to it. He reached out and then never heard back from one man.
You, you said nobody responded to the R P at all?
Yeah, one person is true.
One medical provider.
And then they read the newspaper and they're not responding. Probably.
All right, see.
All right. I've got a question on the carryover. It was, didn't have maybe a carryover last year. I know it was carryover the year before that, year before that. I don't know what.
The total balances on the carryover. So previous, the previous, those were spending and last year we did have two point five and, and, uh, and the two point five, a lot of them were unused payroll money and, and, and basically about one million that were unused. And, uh, and so, and, uh, so those, those money and because of cost increase and, and changes done within the operation cost and everything. So, so we. increase and and changes done within the operation cost and everything, so so we have to use that money to help cover our expenses this year. And uh, we were able to use what we had left from the previous year. That's the reason why we didn't come plus more money because we we were able to use that money to cover our price increase.
So so this year, on June thirtieth, you're only you only anticipate lapsing twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And where you see that?
On the. Relative page.
It's a small number in comparison to these glaring numbers, but why it's put up with prescriptions being tripled? Uh, it's five, four, zero, three, zero.
Double.
From sixty to one, ain't it?
When we took old medical staffing, we had to. Number. When we took old medical, so we had to increase the uh, the the microphones and all that. And uh, and also we have some, a fitting that we have to like for the medical records, records, for E and R, and that costs us about thirty thousand.
Have you guys done an analysis, putting on paper, what you're having to pay for now that you're running your own medical, that you didn't have to pay for before, because this is another example?
Yes, yes, we have that. I have that, and we we are tracking that, and we finally got the first four full months of the bills what we're paying since transitions. And I was comparing comparing that to the estimate, how much it would cost when we took over. And I'm using that number, I have all that number, and we'd be glad to share it with everyone.
What, okay, what is that number?
Oh. It's it's above what was estimated. And uh, I don't have it with me right now.
How how far above?
I'm not gonna throw a number out here, but I'm not, I look essentially.
But you can get that for us?
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, we're tracking every bills and what we're paying the last four months. And uh, and uh, during the transition, we didn't really change any services, but we want to bring up any other services. So we just use the same provider and uh, and all the vendors that that what uh, Kunki used and uh, and uh, and I'm looking, I'm reviewing bills every month. And uh, there's a lot of ways that we're trying to save money and for instance, and uh, just to buy the booze. And uh, we, Kunki, they were getting from a cash and and then now we were able to find get it from Sam, from Amazon, and then we're saving sixty cents a month. And those are things that we're doing, little things that we're doing, trying to 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 reduce the cost. And uh, and so.
Yeah, but if saving pennies is costing nickels, I mean.
Can can I ask you about, uh, it's the five, four, four, five, five, five professional services other? That is a a two million dollar requested.
Over seven hundred percent.
Can you can you tell us what that is?
On the second page, kind of right at the bottom.
Second page, towards the bottom, yeah.
Probably M and O cap category.
Okay, that's the, um.
That's uh, oh, the VHS.
Have Paul explain that. VHS, like the old video?
It's a.
Just like I said, let's go.
Also, um, also. They provide that, so. Worth, uh, with our staff as far as site checks, which you know is a critical function of the facility. Um, since we're understaffed and and that contract would end into far to meaning for the place. And so, we've contracted with him to assist with just the site checks and some other other functions that they can perform.
And what what's the name of the provider again?
VHS.
So they're coming in doing site checks?
Yes.
So we're we're paying an outside vendor to do site?
They're helping do site checks, uh, that says to spec, you know, whatever shift, whatever, whatever our mental level is extremely low, it allows uh, my officer to do their other tasks without um, the site checks being undone. We have those people that come in and perform the site.
So they're like a temp service for contention centers?
I don't know if you, I don't know if it's a temp service, not, um, maybe, yeah, I don't know.
Is that all they're doing, though, is is doing a site check, so there's no associated uh, software, hardware costs in that, it's just a person?
Correct.
I meant to be a contract? I'm sorry, that's be a a contract?
Yes.
When did we start with them for the full new site check?
I think this was for, uh, early, we started.
Not sure.
August?
It was August, yeah.
So the the budget's three ninety-eight and you were doing it almost. Why is it, why is it going up that high?
So we're ready to find out that some of those people were doing overtime unauthorized, and we would stop there as well. Met with the uh, contractor, we had a good conversation about that. And we've got, we have a system in place now to work. We try to monitor that overtime to where it's not being abused.
And do a better scheduling to make sure we only use them when it's needed, and it's averaging about four hours a week.
So if that is three ninety-eight for this current fiscal year for basically, we'll just say eleven months, and they were doing overtime, but you're still increasing it like two million for a whole year and you're cutting out.
It'll be a contract.
She what?
It's only contract.
But but, yeah, I I I agree, that's probably what happened, but that therein lies the problem that, you know, whenever you guys, just like all of us, I mean, we're a balanced budget system, right? So you're estimating what your expenses are going to be and you're lining up your revenues with your expenses, but then, I mean, I know you guys are are tight, you asked for more last year than what you got, just like everybody around the table by and large did. But then you go and enter into a contract after your budget on something that's going to cost you two million dollars. I mean, how does that, how does that happen? I mean, i- i- if we're entering into a contract on our end, we're encumbering all of those funds, and we've got to have a plan to be able to move forward with that project going into the future and not, well, we had two and a half million dollar lapse last year, which I get that you guys had that, we don't, all of our laps comes back into the big budget that that we used to help give you guys money, um. But we have to consider, w- we can't just say, well, that two and a half million will pay that this year because then the question is, well, what about next year? Because you can't just come back to us and say, well, we have this now. We we use money from before, now we need you to give us money, is that?
So a lot of these things I'm just finding now, um, just like the VHS contract. Um, and we have started redeeming a lot of those contracts that we have in place now and inviting out that we're actually getting what we're supposed to pay.
And we're not throwing rocks at you, because I understand, you're you're new in that position, I get that. Has this budget been before the trust to approve the tru- for the trust to approve this budget before it came to us?
No, um.
Have they had any discussions about this?
I have no idea, and uh, a lot of the process, yeah, when it happened and I was not aware of it. Um, at the beginning, when we had a some unused payroll money, it was about a hundred and one, unused payroll and benefit, we had about a hundred and twenty thousand. And uh, it was supposed to be a temporary fix at the time to make sure that we still continuing doing the side check. And then that's that's very important to to our operations, and then that's our priority at that time. And when we realized that the some of the scheduling column and overtime, it has, um, the the went up by to up to fifty thousand, we, that cost about two hundred thousand a month. And uh, so when we realized that at that time, we, at the time, we were able to cover those costs because we had the the carryover money and uh.
But you obviously can't cover those costs next fiscal year, because you're asking for. Whatever it is.
I have, I have some questions on the contract again.
Over six million, over six million dollar increase, so.
Right?
Just from general fund. Your grand total budget is six point two million dollars, so. I mean, you you kind of understand where I'm coming from? I mean, and we had talked about this for several years, I mean, I mean, you guys are a completely separate legal entity, but I mean, I think that your budgets should be going to them before they come to us to be vetted. And I think if you guys move towards a system like what everybody around the table in our departments to utilize, which is when we set a budget, we have a set salary budget, set benefit, travel, M and O, capital. And if we're going to modify that budget in the middle of the year, say something comes up that's unforeseen and we want to move money from capital to M and O or vice versa, we have to go to budget board and we have to explain to budget board why we need to make that change because we have money allocated in certain accounts. Whereas I think you guys have kind of operated more, you know, the water cash out of the pocket, you know, we've got this money, we we got to pay this now, we got to pay that now, we got to pay this here. And then we wind up getting into a situation to where we have expenditures that don't have money earmarked for them into the future.
We've had discussions about that, um, because like I said, this is, I'm still, it's it's been like drinking from a fire maybe the last two and a half months, and it seems like I find out something almost daily. And this is a process that I'm not getting involved with at this level, um, this agency until recently. He and I have. I want to do something like what we're talking about. We've already had conversations about why things are the way they are, because it didn't make a lot of sense to me. Uh, so we're trying to move to a system where it's a way to find where I want to go, and I'm having all my division directors and then, um, reports about what their expenses or they expect expected expenses will be for the upcoming fiscal year. We can get it done for this meeting, um, so I'm not sure that I was going to be here, um, today to be involved in the process. Those are things that are being addressed, a little bit addressed in heaven.
Back to the temp service type thing. So quickly glancing at the contract, a couple of things stand out. Again, I just glanced, so my initial reading could be wrong, but it looks like the contract is for two years. So how do you enter into a contract for two years when you don't have funding for the subsequent year? That's the first question. Secondarily, uh, much like contracts with temp agencies, if you, this contract appears to allow for you all to hire people who have come to work via the temp at enough charge, are you doing that? Are you converting staff from this group to your own staff?
No, there's a provision in the contract, you're talking about the VHS.
Yeah, so.
I met with, yeah, both the VHS last month, I think. And I think that we were able to renegotiate the two-year part of that, I think. I would have to check with Chief Logan to be sure, but that's something that should be, should have been renegotiated. And, uh, what do you have, what?
Are you, if I come on as as um, an employee of this group and I'm working in the facility and then you say, hey, Joe, I'd like you to come come to work for us, we're paying, we're paying, there's a schedule in there, a certain percentage of the salary for how long that individual had worked. So are we paying an upcharge? Are we converting these employees to regular employees and paying an upcharge?
No, if I understand your question correctly, there is a provision that won't allow for us to hire their people in our facilities.
Oh, okay, well, maybe that changed, because in looking at the contract, it looks like that is allowed. And then the other part is, you you said that right now, these folks are are just doing site checks within the facility, so you're not using any of these people uh, to help with the provision of medical services?
I think the only thing that they're doing.
So no nurses, no, nothing?
They don't have any uh, eBay content at all.
Is those those services are are contemplated and the contract is?
Not sure if you're looking at if we live at the same contract now, because I don't really see any of that, like, you can contact it out, but.
Well, like I said, eh, first blush and I could be wrong, but.
What's that contract state as far as cost per year, did it say?
It's hourly, but. Yeah, based on.
Not exceeding.
Well, there's a lot, see, uh, what's your current staff level? Yes, uh.
I think with the VHS employee.
Not not would be. Can you give us the number of folks, your total, the if it's three twenty, as well as those that are not medical, because we have been tracking, you know, the number, the salary number that you guys have, many folks that's supposed to be for. We like to kind of keep in tune with how many you have over there.
Yeah.
Providing those.
As far as, no, I can answer this question for medical, they have sixty-three positions on FTE. And uh, the last time when I checked, it was about probably ten, twelve positions vacant. And uh, it's around fifty, and there's some part-time position which costs about two hundred fifty thousand a year. You know, psychiatrists and dentists, we have their part-time position and a few medical positions and. So we are reviewing those vacant positions right now to see if we truly need this position to be filled, and that will help. Because on the table.
So I think you'd said three twenty total, and you said sixty-three medical, but ten to thirteen, like twelve to thirteen vacancies, so let's just say fifty. So we're looking at, what's it, one seventy?
No, the the sixty-three is position budgeted for medical, and then of the sixty-three, about ten to twelve are vacant.
I get that, I get, but the six, but but those are, the the fifty roughly that you have right now are included in the three hundred and twenty total employee count that you mentioned the second time, correct? So that's what I'm doing.
Yep.
I'm taking the three twenty minus the fifty that you have right now that are medical. So you have a hundred and seventy roughly employees that are not medical, no, I mean, two seventy, two seven.
That sounds alright.
And how many are with VHS, their cover members of employees that send over to do side check?
I'd say maybe twenty, I mean, that's just a rough guess on.
Okay, thank you. And is that a seven day a week deal that you use them?
Understand there's an interest in guys looking at an outside vendor payroll. Uh, with, and maybe many of the MOU, but I only see the professional services county or secretary, which includes the payroll services that our office provides. Um, but, and I know the, there's a big delta between what we charge and what one of the other outside vendors charges, I mean, we looked at it for the entire county and that we didn't sign. And so I'm just curious where you stand with that.
Maybe you have more information. I know it's about this last year, probably what I. I know it's like this last year, probably when I was July, so you were July and. I just wanted to look at it to see if it was feasible or not for us to do it. And I want to get information and take a look and follow.
So right now, oh, Jason, are you?
Yeah, I'm back, yes.
On your employee count of three twenty. But taking the, the medical personnel out. Are you lower right now in employee count than you've been for most of the fiscal year? Or are you about where you've been for the entire fiscal year? Or are you higher right now than you?
I wouldn't say lower.
Yeah.
Uh. That number fluctuates quite a bit.
Sure.
We had an academy class in district. Or the park week month. And we have another academy class getting very started.
Yeah.
In next month. And so it just, it, it just, it fluctuates, you know, we have to leave for whatever reasons. Nearly every week. And in our academy, we expect to lose fifty to one percent in just the academy. Uh, every academy that we have. And I don't have a number that we expect will be in the academy that's coming up. And, and we're doing things to probably address our staffing. You know, we've been in contact with sheriff's office, police department. Several of them, um, both takes enough of home city area. And, uh, Lansing University as far as breaking stone justice files. Finally, three people.
Yeah. Well, where I'm kind of going with that is. Your, the fifty that you have right now for medical. Your medical employees, those are theoretically being paid with dollars that you were paying your medical contract. Yeah, right? You're just kind of substituting them. So we don't really need to talk about that right now because that's, you know, that's a separate thing. You got other funding for that. You're, when we initially gave you guys your first budget. It was contemplated that the salary dollars we gave you was for four hundred and eighty. You guys gave raises and lowered. On your books, your F T E count to thirty-fourty and then. Lowered it to three thirty. And said that the salary dollars that the county gives us covers three hundred and thirty employees for a fiscal year. Well, right now you're at two seventy based on the math that we did. That's sixty employees short from what you were budgeted for. I, I'm curious why you're estimating. Only a twenty-two thousand dollar lapse in your budget if you're running. Fifty to seventy employees short every single month. That is a huge amount of money. That you're not spending on salaries that was allocated for salaries. Does that make sense?
So I think based on some information that was provided whenever I first got appointed. We made some salary adjustments there. We thought we're, we were good with it just because of the financial information that was presented at the time. And. Come to find out that information wasn't at that great.
So now. Is the expectation that since there was errors made on you guys at the end? To determine whether you had the money, that we're just gonna. Keep those expenses the way they are and hope that the county has extra money to fix the problem?
During the time and, uh, the number like that. Since then, and I know we did a five percent for all the detention officer raise. And that's just to bond your pay up and, you know, we were hoping to be able to use that as a tool to recruit that. And, uh, and that's all additional costs and, and, and there's some changes, there's some restructuring and. And based on the decision was made to hire some new positions. And, uh, make adjustment and, and all those effects payroll. To, to extend to where it's best for the jail to operate. And so, so we had to get that, but you have a budget that you have to live with.
Just like the rest of us. I know every single person around this table. Either has an increased request in their estimate of needs. Or they didn't put one in just because they know that we're tight and so they're not even asked for it. But everybody around the table needs more money in their budget. Is that? Is that an inaccurate statement? But we stick with our budget, even though there are things that we want and things that we need and things that we. Those, those urgent things, we figure out a way within our budget to make those happen. And if we can't figure out a way to make them. Then they just can't happen. We, we don't, we, we don't just go and make the decision to. Increase our expense liability on the hope and prayer that. Somebody else is going to fund us for, for that endeavor.
Totally understand the budget situation.
But I, but see, we've had this conversation.
I understood that. But again, these are, I'm not the. Good words in anybody's mouth right now because those decisions were made. When we, when I do the budget, I know exactly how much each, each position should be paid. And, and, uh, so. And that's, that's nothing to do with Paul.
I, I know it doesn't have anything to do with Paul. The, the, whenever I mentioned to Paul about having, you know, a, a salary account, benefit account, I mean, he was, he was very. Open to that, but so was Greg Williams when I mentioned it to him. So was Brandy. So was Chris Sherman when I talked to him before he even came on. As the CFO, everybody's like, that's a, that's a great idea. We've got to do that. We have to do that. But it's never been done.
No, so going forward, like I said, we made those salary adjustments based on the information that I was given. And it wasn't until after that I found out that information was not correct. Wasn't what it projected to be or what it said at that time. Yeah, I made the decision. I made the decision based on the information that, um, at that time and, uh.
How much did, how much did that cost?
What about the salary just? Since. It's a. I don't know, I don't have the.
It'd be fair to say. You guys average, I think, numbers I saw about a hundred thousand in overtime per month. Has VHS lowered the overtime cost or are you still paying enough?
Well, since we've done that, they will work a lot.
But not only VHS, but the.
Both fixing it.
Now they can just keep this by now and, and try to use your best. And then I have, uh, explained to Paul and then we're working on all. Make sure that's the. The old chart, everything, every position is exactly this is what we paid and no changes made unless it's authorized by. All of them.
Can, can I ask, I'm confused on, on a couple of things. To whoever asked a question about the carryover at twenty-two thousand dollars. When Cody was asking about your staffing levels. Right? The number of medical that you had budgeted was sixty-three. You have fifty or fifty-one employees. You told me earlier that the salary number for those presumably sixty-three employees is four point seven eight million dollars. So. There's. Twelve or thirteen positions that have gone unfilled. And that's twenty-two thousand dollars? You see what I'm saying? It doesn't, none of that makes sense to me. Additionally, let me ask you a question. In the F Y twenty-four, twenty-five amended budget, you have fourteen million, five thirty-five as your, as your salary total. You were carrying the, the prisoner care contract. And I understand why we had a contract with turnkey. So that was an M and O item. When did you get it? Turnkey went out sometime Oc- was it September, October? You picked those employees up. Is that fourteen million dollars reflective of? The four point seven eight million? Or that number's really eighteen million?
Right, that was prior to.
So. When we make transfers to Cody's point, when we do transfers within our own budget. Those reflect, for instance, I, I had to move money around within my general fund account. So when we started off budgeting, my totals had changed and when we, we undertook the process. My salary may, would show an amended budget for the year of three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. It might've started at three twenty-three, but I, I moved it somewhere else within my budget. Why do you all not do that?
We do keep track of that. The reason why I leave that there because that was doctor. And that's why I kept that there. That way when you see the difference, that's why we're here to explain the difference. And, and you'll see the adjustment where the money moved from comparing to the current year budget and that's what the final budget was. But that's why I'm leaving it there because if I do adjust that, then I'm gonna have to note everything, every line.
It was an adopted budget until it wasn't because she kicked them out of the facility and you, you took those payroll expenses on. It says amended budget. Not done.
Basically it's the September budget and then turnkey left in October, but you're right, when we do transfers, we move from, and they should have M and O up to salary.
I mean, part, I, I think part of. The discussions is when Cody was sending for district one and now that I'm back. The way you guys are operating and not running these transfers across the trust agenda. And moving the money so that we have a good accounting throughout the year, just like the rest of us are doing. Makes it difficult when it comes to these types of discussions because we're having to. Drag is not the right word, but we're having to ask a lot of questions to figure out why these numbers vary so much.
And when you don't have it in certain places, it's like when I'm going on vacation and I just take cash and I'm paying. Out of my pocket cash for everything. I'm four days in and I reach in my pocket and I'm like, what the hell? There's no money left in there. Where did it all go? Right? Because it, I wasn't actually budgeted into certain buckets to be able to do certain things. It's really easy to lose track of it. And I, I feel like that's part of our problem here.
Oh, that can be fixed. That, that's why I have another spreadsheet that we have. I'm tracking on the estimate. Of the medical cost and the actual number. That's what I'm tracking. It's not showing on here.
And, uh. So I'm not a real numbers guy. Uh, I like it simple. And, you know, I have had some discussions the last couple of weeks about how we can make it. At least simple for me now and where our money is, where our money's going, what we have and. It takes a little bit of time, but I think we'll get there in some way, hopefully a lot sooner than later. Cause I'm not sure what was done in the past. How they manage the money or anything like that. So I'm having to get up to speed on it. Relatively quickly along with everything else that I'm finding out, so. A bit of a challenge.
So see, you did actually transfer, like you got with parks office and changed your M and S budget, right? M and O to salary for these.
When I do the.
For this four point seven eight.
Appropriation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so it was.
Yeah, yeah, in M and S is all recorded. The actual number is all recorded, payroll and, and, and all, anything that's due under the coding, everything expense code is the same.
I'm looking at the M and S sheet at the very beginning of the budget. I'm not checking that. Yeah, it shows a revised budget of eleven million.
Oh, the budget on M and S?
I'm not understanding it right, Kristin.
Um, it comes in monthly.
Well, that's true.
It, it will increase every month when we send our two millions.
Well, it's a good point. I mean, when there are changes, like the transition and so I need to update. The, the budget, that way it will be more accurate to look at.
Definitely on this big move. From turnkey to, that's in-house.
On your workers' comp, you got a substantial increase on there and it's five four oh two oh.
The medical staff. But I need, all of them has contact with, with in-house, so that way.
So the three hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollar increase is associated with the change in medical. So this change really is costing a whole lot more money than. Even though we were told that it was going to be cheaper, it's. I agree. Substantially more expensive and. More liability.
More efficient on the front end, but. As we transition through it, then it'll start to reduce and I'm, I'm relying on my G S A for that.
Now, we, we at least have to spend some, like, like the I T, the computer stuff or the.
But we haven't even talked about that today. Talking seven point one million dollars, that's salaries. And benefits and I don't, I don't think those are gonna change. Those are gonna probably go up over time, right? So, so that. You said that the workers' comp is because of more employees, not necessarily because of a transition. So we got that. We still have the cost for radiological services and stuff that's in the one point, whatever million dollars is still in there, the one point one four. Um, so, I mean. I don't see those numbers being affected by, you know, having the, the medical in-house for a. You know, a longer period of time. I think those three items just themselves are, are more than what the contract was, so. But I am curious, I, I'd like you to send me that information on your increase. Your, your costs that you're spending now that are solely related to the permission of medical services in-house.
On the payroll, currently we have an M O U with court services for pre-trial. And that's a one thing, uh. Total payroll and then there's a hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
Which, which line are we on?
Uh, it will be part of payroll. It will be part of salaries and benefits. But this is the M O U we have with court services and, uh, and, uh. Current year they are budgeted for court services and we're paying these three employees that transferred to the jail and, uh, they are reimbursing us right now, B O C C. So will this money be transferred to us for next fiscal year?
You said how much?
Uh, the total is one hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And how, this current year, this year, how are you, you paying for that?
Um, we invoice, uh, B O C C. There's an M O U for that, for court services.
I do have a question along those lines. What is your average cost per day per detainee? Starting point, but then. Is there any kind of a savings realized by the. Authority for the people that are out on pre-trial release? If they're not in the facility? I'm curious, what is your average per detainee cost? With that in mind, is there any savings being realized? Because of the folks that are out on pre-trial release and not in the facility? So if it's sixty-some dollars a day and you've got. You know, X number of people out on pre-trial release that are not in the detention center, there should be some savings there. I know there's fixed costs and issues like that, but. But the more we can move people. Successfully to pre-trial release, there should be some savings somewhere upstream, it seems like, but I may be. But I may be wrong.
The jail incarceration rate study and they're not using those pre-trial numbers. They're using the actual numbers of how much time they spend in the facility.
Jason, that's really tough, though, because I understand people, you know, will throw numbers around. It's sixty dollars, whatever, a day there versus five dollars a day, or ten or fifteen for pre-trial. But if you have fifty people on pre-trial and say the difference is thirty dollars, I mean, it's more than that. Let's just say for easy math, it's thirty dollars to fifty people. That's not fifteen hundred dollars. I mean, the vast majority of their expenses are fixed costs that we have. The electricity, if we have fifty fewer people in there, the electricity cost isn't changing. Your food cost does, potentially, right? But most all of those big expenses, if you have fifty less people in there, it's probably not affecting your staffing levels that much, which are all your big driving costs. So while, yes, it's cheaper on a one-off situation to have somebody out versus in the facility, it's.
But if they're out, you're not paying medical, which is a huge cost.
Well, but they're paying fifty people to run medical. And if you have, you know, if you, I mean, if you had fifty, if you had fifty people out that are in there right now, would that mean that you would change your staffing levels for your medical? Probably not, right? So, I mean, I think you would have to have a whole lot of, I get where you're, where you're tracking, but.
Well, and I just, I already kind of knew the answer to the question, but wanted it on record. But does it make sense, is it cheaper to put the people that are on pre-trial release in the detention center? Since our costs are fixed? Instead of having the separate program that is over budgeted, not because of anything the program has done, but by the way, it was designed. Because the detention center and the jail and that population of people in Oklahoma County is one of the biggest, if not the biggest contractor for the county. We're in triage mode, trying to figure out where to put money. And it seems like the big question is where do we put those people? To save us the most money? I'm just raising the question.
What did you say your court services figure was?
One forty-five, one hundred forty-five thousand.
Can, can we back to the special? Special revenue. How much were you projecting again?
Which one?
Figure. What are you anticipating next and why in special revenue?
In special revenue? It's five point one million.
Five point one. And I think you mentioned in there, uh, some discussions with Oklahoma City.
That's all included.
How much of that?
We're expecting a minimum of one point two million from Oklahoma City.
And what have we received from Oklahoma City in previous efforts?
I think in the last two years.
How much?
Nothing in the last two years.
Nothing?
They have no rate.
Is that because those people that Oklahoma City is bringing in are not on municipal charges, which would be eligible for repayment to the county? Or is it because they're charging them with state charges?
Well, they're both, they're re-present contracts, both years, and they have yet to sign off on it.
So if you're projecting one point two million dollars, is it safe to say that the neighborhood that Oklahoma City owes us for the previous two years is somewhere in the neighborhood of two to two point five million dollars or more?
Yeah. Because the last time they paid was five hundred thousand from twenty-three, June of twenty-three. And, uh, and when we invoice them based on just municipal charges only. And, uh, it's higher and what we need, we need to negotiate a contract through the cell.
So we've, uh, we've, we've been in talks for the last month and a half. So, and thought we had the previous two contract years settled. And they decided to postpone whether or not they were gonna sign off on it until the next meeting, I think it's next week. So, um, not sure where the hangup is.
So you're looking at getting some money for those previous two years coming to you plus entering into a contract in the next step one?
Oh, hey, hang on. So that five point one million, is that inclusive of what you think Oklahoma City is going to enter into a contract next year plus the previous years?
No, no. That two million is agreed to pay on last year and current year, that will help us balance on part.
Once again, I just don't understand how you're not balanced when you've got sixty, not accounting the ten or so on the medical side that you have budgeted from the M and O transfer. You've got sixty employees.
Payroll all the time and, uh, what we pay VHS since, it's been exceeding the unused payroll money. And, uh,
You're sixty employees below what you were budgeted for. Three thirty versus two seventy.
But that's not, not the number for, we have, we don't have that much unused payroll money. When you look at how though.
I mean, math's math.
Like the payroll and it's on the, on the cell. So the, it shows on that each position and what's total cost for all the positions. And, uh, there's some payroll adjustment, there's some positions added.
Well, this is, this is total full-time positions, three hundred and seventeen. Number of budgeted positions. Thought that was three thirty. Did you guys lower the number of positions again, when it went from four hundred to three forty to three thirty?
Eighteen hours, we had three seventeen.
I mean, how long is it gonna be until we get an estimate of needs where it's a hundred and fifty? You know?
Even at three seventeen, it's fifty difference. Do you know how much? Consistent budget, year to budget, year to budget, year to, my understanding.
You said there's some overtime costs. Do you know what those numbers were about you?
Uh, overtime costs?
Yeah, so you said that some of the reasons.
Average for the last four months.
Well, just, you know how much money you're gonna have for, why at twenty-five is overtime cost? Because you had said that. Yeah, you're at one point seven. So, I mean, and I'm just, just being in your shoes at one point. So just kind of walking this back memory lane, and I hate to be like Uncle Rico, you know, and reliving the past, but. So I think what Cody is, what I hear him saying is that, so if your average employee cost with benefits, so your total fiscal exposure on employee, let's say it's seventy or seventy-five thousand bucks. So if your detention officers are up to a certain amount of money, then you have the twenty percent抵减, the other twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollars in health costs that they have on the back end. So if you're down sixty employees and you've been down sixty employees for the entire fiscal year, just to do quick math, I mean, sixty times seventy-five thousand is four and a half million dollars. So even if you had, let's say, a million and a half in overtime, there's still three million dollars that Cody and, and like, we're not able to see maybe where that goes. I mean, and maybe the, I'm just throwing softballs here, but maybe the answer is part of it's that behavioral health, not behavioral.
The VHS.
Yeah, the, the, VHS, VHS, whatever, yeah. Maybe it's part of that contract, or maybe it's, maybe medical is, wasn't what you anticipated. I think, I think what, and the reason that we questioned, I think, differently what you do is because this is probably a world you haven't lived in. What I mean by that is, for example, at the county, whenever, let's say that we run into a problem where we can't make salary dollars. We don't have the ability to just go in and just randomly take the money and pay in another, in another call center. So what we have to do is we have to go before the budget, where we have to say, hey, we don't have the money in salaries. We have it in M and O, so we need to transfer that up. So I think that's probably where some of the confusion is, like from iron, because I don't use this word because that's all it is, but when the money's all thrown in one checking account, so does speak. I think that's maybe where some of the confusion possibly is, because again, what it appears is that, just doing quick math, the number of F T's that have been down, it appears it should be at four and a half million dollars in the bank. So a million and a half of it's kind of going over time, but then there's that still three million that's not. Yeah, just again, just to apply over fifty thousand level math. You know, so I, I think that's probably what Cody's asking to some extent is, and I'm sure there's, I don't think I'll carry it out the back of one on vacation, where I think we're just trying to understand maybe where, because that salary savings is a massive number. When you're down sixty employees, that's, that's a big number quick. And so I think that's probably where maybe some of the, some of the discussions coming from today is that since there is such a high level of vacancy, which we experienced too. Our difference is we just had to give it back, you know, for example, last two years, we, we gave back five point nine million dollars because we just couldn't spend it, you know, because of the employees, we could not hire them fast enough. And so I think that's probably somewhere the confusion is, is when there is such a large vacancy rate that equates to real dollars that were put into a budget.
I think the difference is the, what was budgeted for the current position that we had. I don't think that number is gonna be accurate anymore because all the payroll changes and.
Okay.
And I don't think that number three thirty is not accurate enough. I can assure you that, because I know it's, it's, you know.
But that's, that, I understand the problem.
I, I understand the budget and.
Because you're, you're making, you know, if, if you had that two and a half million dollars that was lapsed last year, that has to be viewed as one-time money. So if we need to replace vehicles or if we need to get new, I was gonna say mattresses, but those are kind of an ongoing thing. If you're replacing the doors or the lights or the cameras, those types of one-time expenses, that, that's, that's one thing. But when you take that money and allocate it other places that are going to be recurring in next fiscal years, then you're saying, well, we're gonna use the money that we saved last year to pay this, and now we're gonna tell the county to go forward. We need you to give us that extra money again so that we can continue operating the way that we operate it.
I totally agree and I understand how it works and, and I, and it's, it's. I'm just paying the bills and I don't make those decisions. And I, those are, those are important issues that I discussed with both Greg and Paul and they are fully aware of this. And we are nailing this on, on everything that we are trying to do okay on our side to fix this.
And I appreciate that. You're just one of the apps, I guess.
Right. And then numbers are numbers and I'm not gonna lie, it's, it's here. And I'm, I'm just presenting the numbers and we see it now, now we just need the explanation of why we are needing more money for. And then, and we know, we are looking, we try to find the problems and try to solve it. And we're working on it.
What's your motor vehicle passenger, a hundred fifty thousand dollars?
What is that? First of all, the, the three, you know, vehicles that we're getting, because some of the vehicles that we have, it's, I think we got a few that, that friends left on the shares of it and took it back. Whether you use those vehicles for for transport, yeah.
They then were real.
D O C. If I'm on mental health.
See, on, um, back on the Oklahoma City, the money that's been used, that's not in your budget, the five point one. So that comes in, that would be on top of the forty. So that would be on top of the total forty-seven. When, when they do pay it back.
I think there was an agreement just last month for cap seven hundred and fifty thousand, fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four. So if you're expecting more than that, you're not gonna get it based upon that agreement. Oh, that was one year. Yeah, twenty-three, twenty-four.
What is it?
There's a two-year back one.
We have the money on the table.
Yes, absolutely. Five hundred thousand dollars.
And then I am so sorry, I, you've already answered this, I just missed it. When Paul had asked about subscriptions, what did you say those were for? Was it medical or like?
Medical records, that's about thirty thousand a year. And we have to look at, uh, of violence and, and I, and stuff. And that's a big deal, sixty thousand there. And Microsoft, the, of the additional account. It was all additional costs.
Okay, just for the record, anybody out there, this, this one pattern is just an article from the Oklahoman, March seventeen, twenty twenty-five, so it's already in the public sphere, so we don't need to receive it. But it's the article about the no deal yet only bills, that article that the Oklahoman did. So, just in case anybody's curious what.
I'm not receiving.
Can't move something.
Hey, real quick, because a lot of the conversations we've had have centered around medical. I want to make sure, I thought, Cody, you had, there was a comparison to, to determine whether or not what we were paying for a contract provider was in fact more expensive than doing it in-house. What was that answer?
C said he definitely knows that it is more expensive, but he's gonna get us the actual.
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
And there's some questions like, like what can we do? Some of the stuff we didn't know. And like, like going through the medical thing, that's quite a lot of what they're doing, but now we have to pay someone to do it. And, and all that too. So those are additional costs now. Yeah, it will be all on there.
How many F T's did Turnkey have versus what you have now, if you know? You know what was on the contract? And the reason I was asking is, I mean, could you just set up Dan and Company, could you just take that same employee they had? And I don't know what the cost would have to air itself or whatever, but.
It's what we're doing. Somebody's being those, those.
From internally or from the third party? Okay. I got you.
Who, who was the, if you can tell me, the vendor that responded to the R F P? What were they? What was the figure they were?
But even when we had experiences with R F Ps, they were all over the place. And they like Turnkey when they first came out, I think that, I think our first, I think our first base was like six point two, six point four, if I remember right. And the next closest was ARM, which we already had in the facility for a while, and they were pretty close. Then you had groups like Medico that came with like twenty-four million dollars and just unreasonable numbers. But, you know, it's, you, you kind of have them all over the place.
Then the professional services legal, the twenty-four thousand dollar increase. On the second page here.
Yes, that's, that's basically a lot of the outside legal. If the D A's office are not able to. So, so that's hard to put a number on it because we don't know until we get a bill.
Is, is that number?
And that's even a low number, if you brought it, he had mentioned that, that that's even a low number.
Is that in the number, though? You have a contract with the D A's office.
The D A's office, we're paying, uh, that's eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars a month.
So two forty.
Yeah, that's what we pay the D A's office.
And that's part of that, that number?
Yeah, and then, and then we get additional billing, like from professional reporters, all the legal services they have to use.
For what?
Like, um, depositions and things, the transcripts, I believe Cody is.
Well, I think we're footing the bill for deposition services and stuff.
In general, really?
I think so. I mean, we had seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we talked about yesterday in deposition costs. And I, there's no way the county has had. And I, there's no way the county has had that many cases that are not associated with something that happened at the jail.
Hey, Brandon, back to your jail contract for medical services. Those providers, um, let's say there was an issue and and we were sued that surrounded medical medical care. Didn't those providers carry insurance? And so now that liability that might have previously been shared is one hundred percent on us because we make this. Not we, the trust made the decision. So how do you put the price tag on that?
Hate to be the love patch, but I'm not clear on how liable we're. You know, I do know that there were several times where, you know, the internships or you know, turnkey or armor bolt, our members was even C H L arms for them. At some points, the the county was dropped off lawsuit because they had settled it on their end. They didn't receive it, they told me to, but how many times it happened, I wouldn't know it.
But that that was something that we we had as a somewhat a measure of protection.
Yeah, I mean, even in Europe, I mean, I mean, the D A's office kinda surprised me when they said that there's no reason to get it because we're all looking for it anyway, that was kind of the something I was very near, because I didn't think that to be the case.
I remember, for example, I think I'll have the same thing. If there's an issue on our end, we have to pay, but we're liable for it. Whereas if it's on the bottom end, then it's up to them to pay for the insurance.
And for one, I'm sure that's kind of where our lawsuits generally are. Again, the ones that I was involved in, which where's a ton of them? You know, it almost always seemed to be what I what I, as a layperson, I just already saw as a pretty clear line was the result of the lawsuit, something that the medical provider did, or was it something that security contributed to? And, you know, which, as you remember, that was kind of always our complaint with a prior commissioner. Quit screaming, and even a prior sheriff quit screaming from the rooftops, short stack, because then you're just giving people constant. I mean, even though that may be the reality, you're just giving people an open checkbook.
What kind of lab equipment and safety equipment are we talking about and how many computers?
The computers have been there, we're just right now, we're into the fifth year and pretty much, you know, what the I P computers is time to redo. So we put aside about thirteen, twenty percent the next few years, and we will start putting a budget on this to knowing that we might have some problem with computers and laptops, I will be placing those slowly, yeah.
Yeah, how many computers are you talking about?
Some of the other costs that we're asking about is for equipment for investigating would be uh protections of constable. That would be throughout the facility as well. We get a lot of constable, well, it's pretty significant now, within my L. As well as various other ones, so that gives us and increased ability to detect that. Those are a couple of things, uh, what happened to that as well. Some training, additional training.
So if somebody could wave a magic wand and give you sixty to seventy employees overnight, would that help your operation? Okay. The county's budget, giving you budget for that sixty to seventy more employees. So I understand that you're in a tough spot because you're down employees, but from the county side, I would argue you're you're not in the situation you're in because of a lack of funding from the county, we've given you funding to have sixty to seventy more employees. There's other issues that are at play that are causing you guys to have issues having those employees, right? So while, I mean, there's all kinds of things that we would love for you guys to be able to do and that we would love to be able to do in our departments and just be state of the art, the best. And we want you guys to have the funding for that. I think that the funding that we've looked at in the past and what you've received last year and if you've got a flat budget this next year, I think you've got money to provide a constitutionally sufficient facility. But that's that's not our, that's not what we want, right? I mean, we wanna strive for the best facility that we possibly can. You do need more money to go from a constitutionally, you know, acceptable facility to get an A plus type thing, which is what we want, and that was one of the primary drivers to going to a trust, right, Joe? Was so that you guys could look at other funding mechanisms that the county didn't have available to it, right? Have you guys, I know you're asking for a forty seven million dollar budget hoping that the county will provide forty two million. So five million outside, forty two from from inside. Have you guys looked at any other potential revenue streams to help you not only meet this stuff, but go even beyond what's on here to uh to have even better programs, better facilities?
Yeah. Some of those things that we've looked at and experienced and perspective. In fact, I know one incident that we were kind of heavily relying on as far as the revenue grants, that that's the cost for that, so.
What was that?
The phone call.
How much did that cost revenue wise?
About thirty thousand a month.
Thirty a month?
We've used the way.
When when the trusted said that they needed more money from the county at the same time, right? So where did they give any indications where they were gonna make thirty thousand a month? I'm sorry?
They told us to figure it out, figure out what we could do to make it make up that difference. And, you know, we're pretty limited on what we are able to do as far as the trying to create or generate revenue.
Was the was the trustee that raised that issue also the one that cost us the turnkey?
I don't know.
To go along with Cody's point about revenue, generate six to eight million dollars of general fund revenue for that act. It would take about sixteen Devon Towers built every year. Just to give you some indication of what is needed to generate that type of revenue, so that's never going to happen. So I just want you to understand, working on ten cents on the dollar, it takes a lot of property revenue to generate a million.
So, you know, we 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 talked to some of the vendors and they changed one of the uh fingers to that, that we have, the the current vendor. And so we're negotiating with the other providers as well and looking at the contracts to see what they're able to do for us, what we're getting now. As far as the uh revenue from from phones, you know, we really have the choice about that. I think, wasn't there some evidence that we could affect it?
So you said you had something from a trust member wanting to lower those. Did they, was it just one trust member or did the trust vote to change that?
I think it would put the vote, trust, I wouldn't really involve in the process.
So I would think that it would have to be.
Can I, just a general education question for me. I get a a daily count from from your facility, and there are certain breakdowns within that. One of those breakdowns is holds. Can you explain what a hold is?
That's when the outside agency mostly look on city, it's money in state charge. And they put a hold on it for municipal charges.
So when those holds are running in the seven hundred number? That's mostly Oklahoma City?
If I'm understanding your voice correctly, uh, they're our biggest customer.
Yeah.
As far as the what they bring in, so I'm sure that number kind of fluctuates month to month.
So if I'm picked up on a hold, say from
It could be from another.
Out of state?
Out of state, but.
It it, do you hold, do you keep me within the facility for a certain amount of time and then kick me loose? Because maybe I maybe I get stopped on a traffic, what would otherwise been a traffic duty. But if there's a hold out of Texas for me, they bring me in. Yeah.
They check, we used to try to get a time plan for the evening to pick them up, but same as one of the municipal agencies here that brings somebody in, or maybe the out of state hold, or even they bring in for state charts, they have multiple hold. Um, usually then X number of days. If the state charge gets dropped, then it's up to Oklahoma City, it's part of what they wanna do with the municipal charge. And after X number of days, we contact the judge's office or uh the city attorney or municipal judge's office and get this person over here with the hold on, what do you guys have to do?
And so if if I'm on a Texas hold Texas decides they're not gonna come get me, but I've been in the facility ten days, whose cost?
You said X days a few times. What am I plugging in for X?
It could be anyone from three days. And one of the things that would be with the uh deciding judge that makes the if that better be fine.
And and an individual could be in the statistical breakdown that we're receiving. I could have holds from multiple jurisdictions, so would that would that show us? Like, the the number you sent is seven hundred and nine holds. And Joe has one from Texas, one from Louisiana, and one, is it? Is are those holds based on tied to the person, or is it Joe has three holds, so it's counted three times and showing us? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, and I'm not sure I'd answer that question. I would think that would just show.
Okay, thank you for, I I've never understood what that was.
See, you're getting money from the county now every month. It's the one twelve of your budget, general fund budget. And then are you getting a separate amount for the three pre-trial right now? So you're submitting two invoices?
I send the invoice, yeah. Based on the actual number, how much?
I know the three or the one point five.
It's capital, it's capital four thousand one hundred and six dollars per period.
And then what you're getting general fund one twelve, was that about thirty four?
Uh, it is thirty thirty seven twenty six four eighty.
And that was before we took out, before you did that. So your three pre-trial people on budget or budget presenting purposes are appearing full time, correct?
Yes.
See, what do you consider to be your full time number, right? So so if you were to, in your advanced, that means when you all sit, you talk, and you say we're fully staffed, what is that number?
We have to include M R H R, including medical.
No, ju- just let's talk about your security, so for just security, what would be what would be considered a full a full complement stat?
Three seven.
Could be the three seventeen, okay, so so today you've got two hundred and seventy of them, let's just say, right? You got two hundred and seventy staff right now, but they're not medical. That's sure, okay, yeah, that's true. So if you, so if you got two seventy today, let's say that, let's say that tomorrow, for some reason fifty five people walk into the north side of one street. Did you pay them to be in the gym? See what I'm asking? Are 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 you, are we in a position that we couldn't afford to hire the the full time equipment that we had, I mean? You know, cause you know, like was mentioning earlier, we are, you know, as you know, trying to maybe do some pipeline stuff with us and potentially sell that help. So if some of that stuff were to come to fruition?
I think I think it depends on uh whether or not Oklahoma City goes ahead and actually confront the last two years.
Okay.
And then we'll be back there and we'll be back.
And portion of the money, and we did spend about six hundred thousand on on stifles. Then it comes out.
Likely you wouldn't have sufficient hubs to take on that.
Just the puddle that comes out.
Where's the you said six hundred thousand, you paid us stipends, is that on here anywhere?
It'll be under a million dollars.
Yeah, but
It'll be under five.
It has stifened a hundred and eighty six thousand five hundred.
You mean, it's just worked into your salary number?
Yeah, when you look at the
But how's it work into that number when there's individual, there's salaries here, and then there's a spot for stipends that they're looking to give next year, but it doesn't have anything listed on stipend that was given for this year.
It's looking right here.
Yeah.
One eighty six.
It's higher, the six hundred is not always higher because of the sign on bonuses that we get from someone who goes out something that like next year, but this will what was requested on that.
Are you guys continuing to try to address, you know, when I look at I mean, once again, we've lowered the number of positions to three seventeen. So if we just go off of that number, you only have a hundred and eleven of those three seventeen budgeted as detention officers, but you've got ninety one of those as clerk and clerk supervisor. So, I mean, that's pretty close to even numbers. I mean, I I think from what I hear from folks over there, you guys the the media, the whatever, seems like where we're short is on detention, not necessarily on clerks. Right? So Brandy had told us that she was trying to convert folks that were clerks into getting them certified to be detention and whatever. I mean, it just seems to me like, and and I've never worked in in that environment. Brandon is way more in tune with that than I am, but whenever I look at these numbers I mean, it just seems to me to kind of be cable on this when you got a hundred and eleven detention officers and ninety one clerks.
So she created a D S O, D S O position. It was supposed to uh help out on the hold, and it never worked out the way that it intended to. And so we we've done away with the D O, or D S O position. And those people have an option to either become full time detention officers or drop back to a front position.
So you're giving the option when you need detention officers? And and that was kind of what I asked her too, was you need detention officers and you're giving people the choice, do you wanna do this or do you not? Heavy in clerks, then.
I I would say it would be there there are areas for, that's one of those what we have loaded. Some of those clerical positions, um, were not able to staff. And uh, the D S O deal is, it, it never worked out the way that it's intended to, so. Not everybody wants to be a full-time detention officer. And some of those clericals took that D S O position and it's, when it wasn't actually what it was intended to be. So they're going back to a clerical position within the facility. Uh, so I think just someone working for it, they don't want, they don't want the inmate contact.
Yeah, I know, I get that.
Cody, we went, put your D one hat on for a second, to, to the, the questions that you're reading here, we went down to which top halls? And one of the, one of the questions that came up was this staffing ratio mix, do you remember? What that percentage was, was it like? Two to one D O's to clerical, was it three to one?
I think it was closer to three to one or something, cause when, and we had mentioned the numbers, they were. Aguest, to say the least.
Yes, and, and that, we had conversations with. The trust or the administrator of the trust at the time and that kind of generated some of this. But now we're back to this, what was the word you used, cattling on us? Yeah.
I mean, I think there's a, and there's a different mindset, I mean, all across the country, you know, I mean, I've. I guess I said I'm unfortunate, I've, I've, I've toured eighty jails across the country back when I was in the. And it's interesting, the difference that you have. In, in ideology, what I mean by that is, for example, you know, some people adopt the B O B mindset, the pure prison mindset where. Every single year, the, the ward and secretary gets out and shoots again. So if she, if they need her in the guard tower, she gets up there, he or she gets up in the guard tower in emergency. And you've got just such a gamut of, of the way people staff. I've seen some where legitimately the only staff that you have doing. And they, I mean, where, where clericals far outweigh the number of D O's, just based on the type of, so I, I'm not saying particularly for this that would work. But I think that a lot of industries are going to where, almost where it's a hundred percent detention officer, where they can hire them, because again. When I say detention officer, I don't mean they just do a detention officer job, I just mean that when they need them, they can put them into a role. Where they've gotta pick up a taser, pick up a shield, pick up side check, whatever it may be. So the, the staffing is just, I mean, that's one thing I think that. I've had conversations with, you know, everybody that's been at some point in the role that we're in. Oklahoma County jail is just, you're, I mean, it's, I mean, you toured enough, you toured enough places. It's just, it is not designed well for, 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 to help staff at all. And, and so, you know. So one, and I don't know what the D S O program was, but again, like going back memory lane, we had. At one point, we had about ninety clericals was about the most we ever had. Um, ninety clericals plus, um, housing, which included housing monitors, which they basically just set in the bubbles and just.
Right.
Let out recreation, no limits on that. But we generally always have at least two hundred and fifty, I would say, D O's. You know, I think the lowest staff we ever got to, if I remember correctly, is about three sixty-five. Um, of course, we didn't have medical, but, um, but there's been times where we were, you know, you know, four sixty-five. So I mean, it's a, just a real different world back then.
Well, when you add housing monitors into that, it's a hundred and two of those positions are housing monitors slash clerks.
So the housing monitors have kind of a different function. Um, they don't do the same things as the detention officer. And you're talking, it's a different world, just like you said, nowadays and. You know, the place that they haven't. Years, I, I try to recruit, I'm not working. And. The responses I get from people that talk to that is like. You might come to work down there, you know, it's not what it's, what's free to be sure. Um, you know, we're always looking for good people to come here and make it better. And, you know, it's paying, it's part of that as well. Um, you know, we have people that. Don't make it up there, you know, we have people that understand government business. But the case may be, and. Even with the overtime, you know, of working, you know, they're, they're just barely getting much, not getting much. Um, on what we pay, you know, we, we want. We've been in, in discussions with our training divisions to try to. At least come up with some low level standards and see if we can attract the better part of people, but even at that, you know. The pay's down. We're gonna, we're gonna get the people we gotta pay them.
You know how you compare to, uh, other sheriff's offices around? You know what Cleveland does, or if you all, if you all go on the salaries or like recently?
I'm heavy, you know, I think. Um, most of the, the jails around metro area. Probably. I know, uh, Creighton County does and Port Hurst, Navy County does as well. Not sure about Lowndes County, Potomac, Navy County, yeah, though. Compared to some of the other jails, I mean Tulsa County. They pay a little bit more than we do.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I know, and I know again, this is, this is a big push against us at the end of our. Um, was that we didn't need any cops at the jail, but I mean, honestly, that's. That's a, I mean, we said it back then, I would still say it now, that's a huge. People use the jail as a stepping stone.
Right.
To get into a, a typical long punishment world, but I mean.
And that's the jail that we're trying to use.
Yeah. Sure.
The criminal process versus plus that.
Yeah, I mean, even beyond that, it's, you know, I mean. Even if they were, if they were deputies or they were officers in jail. I mean, I probably shouldn't say this out loud, but there's. Every time you pass a trooper sitting on the side of the road, the construction side of it, you know what it makes? So, you know, we, we have those same jobs. Yeah, twirling thumbs for five hundred bucks for a three-hour shift, you know?
If I may throw some numbers, so what we are paying our detention officer, the, the clerical. Right now, it's averaging about, the clerk, they're making twenty-eight, forty-five a month. For the pension, so they're making thirty-four thousand a year, that's what.
That's very, that's very far.
Yeah, and then for officer, it's averaging about forty-two thousand a year and it's about thirty-five hundred a month. Call it, detention officer.
And we, we had conversations about what you're doing of this at the peace range. I mean, right now, the only time we would pay.
Sure.
Is this beginning of the month. Um, and what I'd like to do is probably implement, and, and start taking, and start taking money. Start as the day, you go to the detention officer, and you got steps.
Steps, right.
You know, based on uh, um, your yearly performance evaluation determines whether or not you move up that X level unless you decide to promote. To a higher rank between then, the same thing with the sergeant ranks and, and uh, um, staff sergeant ranks. What, because the, that gives people some kind of sense, something to go to, to a lot of the higher ranks.
Yeah.
That, did you say earlier that you guys gave a five percent payroll this year?
There was part of the five percent in, in that number already.
I, I did, but like here, there's a budget amendments merit, two and a half percent.
It was only give you four.
When did you do the?
Uh. I think probably beginning of last year.
Beginning of last calendar year?
Yeah, the current rate is the five percent included, that with the five.
So you've not done any. Pay adjustments merit or otherwise since July one this fiscal year?
Yes, that's accept some additional position and that's all.
Yeah, additional positions, you cut positions?
Well, that's, that's eliminated some of the positions too, that's like some of the numbers that have been reduced to the result.
Okay, so the six hundred thousand that was stipends, where did that go? Is that this fiscal year?
That's, yeah.
Was that given across the board?
Yeah. Uh, they, the longevity pay is across the board for everyone. And the current fiscal year, we have like four, the commission and employee, and then uh, clean.
So was longevity pay on top of this six hundred thousand?
So it's part of the. Yeah.
So I know at one point they were doing stipends to get people to come in to do overtime shifts and then for, or whatever. Or, um, yeah, it's. They also use the, um. Any other events that we have, so we need to, of this, my, my decision, uh, Oklahoma City is part of the board. Genius, and they were bringing in a large number of people to process here. And we can have personnel accommodate a number of people that have been bringing in. So we would offer stipends or overtime. Um, for people coming, if they would give us advanced notes or even if we had to. Other problems, we need to accommodate, if they're building, they can.
And we were giving stipends to those to offer them, if they wanna come overtime on, on weekend, if. How achieve, but we have stopped offering that now because of real, yeah. And then the sign-on bonus, we stopped that.
You stopped them, but you still have them in your budget for next year?
Uh, the, the one request is for the longevity pay. The, then the commission and the cert.
You have stipend on there as well?
Yeah, the total together, yeah, except wow, all longevity pay and, yeah.
It's what?
Because uh, the stipend that we had agreed is gonna carry on until next year. But these are people that have already had, who have followed this.
So the one eighty-six stipends you both promised?
Yes.
Promise with known funds or promise with hope for funds?
So the ones that are promised are the sign-on bonuses?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that was, that last year, it's a, you already saw that, I'm not repeating that.
Do they have to work so long to get the sign on?
Yes.
All right, anybody have anything else?
Uh, back to the, um, about the number of computers that we need to replace for the year, next year, it's about seventy-five. Desktop and seventy-five and twenty-five.
But did you say seventy-five what?
Desktop and twenty-five. Four hundred.
So the seventy-five thousand was twenty-five. Oh, you said.
Four, seventy-five desktop, twenty-five laptop.
Anybody have anything else? All right. Now, do we have a motion to receive the estimated needs for the criminal justice authority for one, one, six?
No.
Motion to say, I want to favor say aye. Any votes? Thanks, guys.
Yeah. I, I'm not sure.
Ahead of the afternoon schedule. Also, also a question for us.
I'd like to. Uh, whenever. Says I, I, I'm just. Yeah.
Want you to come to the jail.
That's the thing. I guess what is bad is. Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I, I'll be here for budget board at ten to do, um, my, our B E T item, and then I can come down. For the, for the days in the morning.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Oh, you're joking.
Do you guys, does anybody need a break or do we wanna push on?
Did my face just say that all?
My sense of because we have a scheduled break during this time, so I didn't know if people were wanting that or if we're wanting to push on.
I, I'm done after two, I mean, you guys can carry on without me, but I, I won't be available after two.
Chrissy, I think you're in kind of the same boat.
About two fifteen budgets. And sit in.
All right, well then. If nobody has an issue, let's press on.
Your bathroom break, at least.
Yeah, let's, uh, five-minute recess, uh, while I'm here. Is there a motion to recess until it's over, forty in this room? Motion to say, I want to favor say aye.
We need to reload on the. We need to reload on the.
All right, there are motions to return to open session.
Second.
You got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you both, I just have it. All right, um. Chris, if you want, we can go ahead and do you, Mr. Speaker, since you're here.
It's not, it's not, he's not offered offered to help.
Okay, without objection, the chair will ask the Parks Office to make the, uh, to document that Jessica's passing out on the half of the speaker's seal in part of the record.
Hey, really, I'm just gonna put that right there.
Michelle, but since I was old, I needed it.
Oh.
You gotta turn it around.
Oh, wait. All that's wrong.
All right, Mr. Speaker, the floor is yours.
Appreciate it, um, super, super grateful for you all and beyond this opportunity to present the budget. Thank you for the work you do and those away from about it. You all are super duper conscientious. Um, I'll just get right into it. Um, at the end of the day, uh, we're trying very, very hard to maximize, uh, every dollar that's given to us. And we are coming back this year with a budget request. Uh, uh, one point three two. Uh, one point three two, eight fourteen sixty-six cents. It represents a, a variance of thirty thousand, one hundred dollars less than the budget that was appropriated to pretrial services, um, for the, for the current fiscal year. Um, Mr. Chair, I would just, uh, remind everybody, and I want to go back, um. So the way this contract is set up, and we want it this way, we appreciate the, the accountability. We're not given a lump sum, whatever budget is, is, um, that is granted to us, that's the amount that we have available. We provide those services, and then the way that we get compensated is to submit an invoice for the services that are provided. And then we're paid based on that in- invoice for appropriate services. I will tell you that last year, um, for the entire, for the first six months, we came under budget sixty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-six dollars. Uh, that's money that the county kept. The reason that we were able to come, uh, under budget nearly seventy thousand dollars in the first six months is because it took us a while to ramp up to, to, to full speed. We weren't fully staffed and we weren't providing the full extent of the services. Uh, we were on pace, this, and and just as a reminder, the, 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 the county gave us the contract for two, two allotments, they divided it in half, it gave us half of the full amount in the first six months and half in the second six months. We came under budget sixty-nine thousand dollars, uh, one hundred, sixty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-six dollars in the first six months. And we were on pace to come under budget approximately fifteen thousand dollars in the second six months. And so we believe this, we're, we're at full capacity right now. We've tried to squeeze out as many efficiencies as possible. And we believe that we can do this contract and provide these services in the next fiscal year for approximately thirty thousand dollars less than what we're currently providing. I will tell you the reason that we've achieved those savings, because we did not feel, we were allotted an extra FTE that we didn't, we're not going to replace, we've been able to maximize, uh, realize some responsibility that we believe that we can do our job without fulfilling one full-time employee. However, you will see a significant increase in the amount of funding that we are asking in this contract for ankle monitoring supervision. We are supervising more individuals on ankle monitors than we had anticipated. Um, and so that, that budget actually is going up from about forty thousand dollars to ninety-one thousand dollars. But even accounting for that increase, uh, this, this budget still represents thirty thousand dollars, one hundred less than the current budget that is allotted for, um, this initiative. I'm happy to answer your question.
Yeah, I remember, um, when we first talked about this, when we first initiated it. I know that you had some, um, initial just startup, like new computer type E's, things of that nature, is that correct?
We, we did, we had some software expenses, uh, startup on the software side of the MIS system.
And some of those were expenses that are just on the front end, because once they're in place, they won't be recurring. So these expenses that you have for computer, uh, office equipment and the MIS software, I see fifteen thousand for the computer and twenty thousand for the software, are those all just ongoing expenses?
Yes, so the, the software system that we're using is Salesforce. And there's a license fee to, to operate that. The annual fee for that is approximately twenty thousand dollars a year for, for the volume, uh, for this much data.
Okay.
And so that's just the, we're, we're, we're into the annual costs now. And so what we've, what we've done on our hard, uh, equipment, like for the actual computer, um, and, and what have you, is we're constantly needing to upgrade or replace computers, not all computers. But we anticipate that we're going to have to, uh, replace about seven or so computers, or upgrade seven or so computers. So it's a fifteen thousand dollar budget that we allotted for, for, it's not just for the computers, but that's for our cell phones, all the office equipment that they need to be upgraded. And again, I can just tell you that that's what we anticipate based on our very best yet. But if we don't spend that much money, um, then, then the county will, will keep the difference.
So if you had a roughly, what, forty-six thousand dollar increase in ankle monitoring, plus you say you're going to come in thirty thousand less than what you did?
Yes, sir.
Where, where is the seventy-five thousand savings?
It's coming from not replacing a full-time FTE. So we, we're literally, um, going to do, we, we, we realized that we could, so in, in all the, the FTE, this, the, the FTE, uh, comes in, I should also say, let me just also mention that this contract represents all of the staff that, that work within the pretrial services initiative, plus three of the staff that work in the community service initiative. So there are three staff, and you'll see these identified, we put all the names here. The last two staff, the community service supervisor, next to last position at the, at the top going across. And then also the community service intake coordinator, both work for community service as well as the administrative assistant, which is the fourth from last category. Those three positions, uh, actually oversee the community service, uh, aspect of pretrial services. So anyone that's assigned to community or to community service will have to check in with team. We assign them to a project, we keep track of all their hours, we, we give reports constantly back to the, the, the judges. Uh, we provide that level of accountability for, as, as well for the people in, um, community service. But we did not, when we originally took over the contract, there was an additional community service intake counselor position, and we did not feel that. We can, we can do all that needs to be done with those three positions. So it's a long way around the saying the savings comes from the difference in eliminating the full-time employee and the increase in, in the ankle monitoring provision.
Well, how much, how much in, in the current budget was the one-time expenses? What's that total for twenty-four, twenty-five?
From last year, I would have to go back only, um, I can certainly give you that information. I only have the, the budget in front of me for, for what we're proposing for this next year. Um, but I can, I can email you that information by the, by the close of business today for sure.
So with the increase in effi- efficiencies that you found, how many people are you looking to serve next year, next fiscal year?
Well, so right now, as of today, um, we have provided service, make sure I get this right. As of today, since June first, and I would just also go back and, and remind, even though the official contract is from July the first, the county had asked us to provide the services for the month of June free of charge, um, which we, uh, agreed to do. Since June first, we have served one thousand eight hundred ninety-eight unique individuals in this program. Deshaw two thousand. Um, and we anticipate by the end of the year, we will have served over twenty-two hundred unique individuals. Um, and that's pretty much the, what we anticipate that we will serve next year. We're in full, we've got a rhythm down, we're, we're understanding, you know, caseload management, how many people we're getting out on a, on a daily basis, on a weekly basis. And we feel like that this budget that we're proposing will allow us to, uh, continue to provide all the services that we're currently, um, providing, um, and will need to provide for the next fiscal year. So, but roughly about twenty, twenty-two to twenty-four hundred. And, and Mr. Foster, the, this is a reminder, and I think you guys know this, but we stay with the person from the time that they are ordered to our care, uh, for supervision and direct support until their case is disclosed of. So there's a constant change of people rolling off a bond and people coming on to a bond.
And on average, how many are on a bond at any given time?
Between six hundred and seventy-five and seven, I think, I would be getting active, active bonds. And let me, let me also just tell you that. And let me also just tell you that as of today, we are serving six hundred ninety-one individuals. We're providing direct supervision for six ninety-one. So on any given day, it's between six seventy-five and maybe seven twenty, if it's a Monday or a holiday weekend, Monday after holiday.
Mr. Speaker, is there kind of an average of how much time you work with them during that bond process?
It ranges, so it, there's so many variances of like, if the cases continue, you know, if there's continuance issue, I would just be completely honest and tell you that if somebody can't make a court date for a legitimate reason, not just because they didn't show up, but for a legitimate reason, that case may be set off a month or two months. And so we supervise people from anywhere from thirty days to six months. I mean, it's, it ranges anywhere.
Mr. Speaker, thank you.
Yes, sir.
On your, the number of people who are serving per day on bond, is that inclusive of OR and conditional?
Great question. So right now, there are only like three people who are out on an OR bond. Everybody is placed on a conditional bond with conditions because when this transition occurred, Ms. Bahena, Ms. Biffle, and the powers that see decided that they wanted high accountability and consistency across the board, and so Ms. Bahena and her office, her own, have only agreed to allow people out on conditional bond. I will tell you, the thing that's gonna make that change is we are in the process of incorporating a screening, a standard screening, a pretrial release screening. And what Ms. Bahena's office has said is, once that screening is in place and everybody's trained on how to read that screening, then OR bonds will likely go up, because then we will know who needs the conditions, the extra accountability, and who doesn't. But until we get that screening in place and utilized properly, she's taken extra precautions to put everybody, to make sure that everybody has.
When that occurs, would it be, I may not get this right, but my thought process in my own brain is that it costs more money for you to supervise somebody on a conditional bond as opposed to an OR bond. So will we see, once the DA decides that we can go back to doing what we've done for a long time in this county, will we see a corresponding decrease, or should we see a corresponding decrease?
I, so to the first part of your question, there's no question. If somebody is placed on an OR bond, all we're doing is sending them a text message when it's time to go to court. You know, we're not, we're not having them come in every week, we're not going out and checking in with them and all the teams.
No GPS monitoring?
Right. There's no monitoring, you're out on your own purposes. My best guess is that these numbers are gonna hold pretty true, but we will see an additional, we'll see more people assigned on our OR bonds to us that we will just send a text to. There may be a decrease in the number of people who are placed on conditional bonds, or they may stay steady. I don't know exactly what the net result of that will be, but I think the end result will be that there will be more people that are assigned to us who are on OR bonds that will need this check-ins.
Sorry. Would it be safe for me to presume that of these six hundred ninety that are on today conditional bond, all of those are on ankle monitoring?
No, no, no. We only have about a hundred people on ankle monitoring.
But of that number that are on conditional bond?
Are some of those, would some of those be on OR?
Would some of them be on conditional?
I don't think most, but I think some.
Some?
Yes, sir. But the screening may also result in more people being let out on conditional bond too. I don't know. We anticipate that it will help us serve more people, but not necessarily more people. I don't think that we're gonna serve an additional five hundred on conditional bonds. We may serve an additional five hundred through OR bonds, but that's not heavy surges.
When you get that screening process identified, will you and your group be involved in the educational aspect of what it actually means when this person is high risk versus medium risk or slow risk? Because that's not necessarily a risk that I'm gonna go out and stamp, Paul, there are other factors that. So are you guys gonna be involved in that educational process with the folks across the hall?
Certainly. The short answer is yes. I will tell you that the advisory council that oversees pretrial services, conditional bond, the advisory council, has selected the assessment that they want utilized, incorporated. We have all, not me personally, but our staff, the staff, along with staff from the district attorney's office and staff from the public defender's office, have all been fully trained on that. So they're going through that process of completing that training. I say they've been fully trained, but almost fully trained. And then the other side of that will be the education component for the judges and for everybody who's making a decision about who should be released and what their conditions ought to be. There'll be the education component, but I believe it will be the actual trainers of that assessment that will do that work.
And that assessment that's going to be utilized, is that something that there is a cost for, or is that was free of charge?
Free of charge.
Oh, so the universe of people that are gonna be screened is not the people that are already being let out either on conditional or OR? It's everybody going into jail? So it could result in more or fewer people being let out on OR?
It could very well result in more people being released. Certainly, everybody who's currently being released will also be subject to the pretrial screening. It's gonna be a standardized process, it's for everybody, but I do think it could mean that more people will be considered. Now, Mr. Nelson, I will also tell you that there is an exclusionary list of charges that will never allow a person to be considered.
But there's this group that we've talked about before that's not on the exclusionary list, that the DA or somebody has an issue with, so then it goes to the judge to make a decision. This will be an additional tool for the judge to use.
Yeah, because they want this person to prove, they wanna see what it says, and that will give me some additional information. So to your point, if a person has additional convictions or charges, or may have a history of not showing up to court, or whatever it may be, that would cause a person right now to not be considered for a conditional bond, they may have access to this screening. And again, it's not gonna be, we don't, and I also wanna say, team does not decide who we provide services to, that's not up to us. The decision makers are the district attorney, public defender, and ultimately the judge. And remember, the judge says that's who we provide services for. We built this budget based on the trends that we've seen, the number of, we've been watching this for about four years before we had the opportunity to work directly with the county, and that's the budget that we submitted and ultimately was approved. You all said, try to find efficiencies, I promise you, we're trying to do that. So we believe that we can provide services to everybody who will be eligible for the services in the next fiscal year at the budget that we're submitting.
Can you be a little bit more specific in terms of defining incentives, indirect expenses, in your evidence?
Yep. So incentives primarily, and almost exclusively, can't think of, well, exclusively are bus passes. And so what we do is we buy bus passes involved, just like everybody, every entity in Oklahoma County provides bus passes to participants. There's two days a year that they go and sell two for one, and that's when we buy them, and when participants are meeting the conditions, doing everything that they're supposed to do. If they have transportation barriers that they're navigating through, they can be given a bus pass to help them stay compliant.
The only reason that number's increasing over the last year is because you anticipate serving more people.
Yes, sir. Indirect costs or everything it takes to run this program, it's our electricity bills, it's our internet bills, it's our water bills, it's everything it takes to have an office open and available and accessible to the participants. And then our admin fees are, we have so many different aspects of what we are able to provide to help support this. So we are also supplementing this contract with about four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in project funding, because anybody who comes to us that does not have stable housing, we connect them with stable housing, and we pay for the first month of that for them at this sober living house. Anybody that doesn't have access to transportation before they can start running incentives, we help with the transportation and so on and so forth. We have peer recovery support specialists that come alongside everybody that's assigned to us. We have support groups, wellness groups, recovery group meetings in-house, and a whole cadre of services that we also provide. The administrative fees go to help make sure that everybody is connected, any of our staff that are helping with that, any coordination of that, any of the admin side, to make sure that we're properly documenting and connecting people with the appropriate services that we provide. We're a nonprofit, so it all goes back into our service model to enhance, ultimately, enhance the outcome of who we are and what we do. And we're not perfect, and I can promise you that we're trying to improve every day, but we sure wanna make sure that this is an initiative that Oklahoma County can not only be proud of, but that's also safe for the community.
Can I ask you another question? You and I have had lots of conversations.
Yes, sir.
And ways that we might be able to get back more in line with what the county was paying for a similar, not the same, but similar service. One of the reasons that the cost has gone up was the OLEDs, NCIC issue, but has there been any further discussions regarding you all being able to perform that service? And if so, are we still in the same spot? And the answer is no, then we're still gonna need to continue to pay for employees?
As far as I'm known. Like, we're happy, we're willing, we've offered, they have determined that it needs to be done through an entity that has credentials that we don't.
Although in some other jurisdictions, a provider such as yourself via the contract is able to perform that service.
We would love to do it. Yeah. We anticipated that we would be doing it.
I'm just curious, we haven't spoken in a while.
So Chris, explain, you were kind of explaining the admin fee, how is that different than the salaries that are listed?
So, that's up.
So an admin fee is for people to do something.
Right.
So how is that different than just part of their normal job?
So the staff that you see at the top, the salaries that you see at the top, those are staff that only work, they only serve participants in this program. That's all they serve. Their entire forty hours a week are devoted to this initiative. What we also have are a team of individuals who have cross responsibilities. So for example, our peer recovery support specialists aren't paid directly to anywhere in this contract. Any additional staff time that we would account for, that we would provide, any other services that we would provide to help make sure a person is successful in this initiative, is paid for out of those admin fees. And that includes everything from our billing, we do the invoices every month, to coordinating wellness meetings, to coordinating recovery meetings, to connecting people with their treatment options, to driving people to their treatment. We do transports to inpatient treatment when the judge orders that multiple times a week. We do transports to any service that the courts would direct the person to when they do not have another means to get to those services. We get them there, and we account for all of those services through the admin fees. It's just the ten percent of the contract to make sure that we are giving the person that we serve the best possible opportunity to be successful.
So how many people does the one-twenty cover?
It's spread out over all of them. Anybody who needs these services has access to the services.
Yeah, how many people does the one-twenty cover?
Oh, how many staff members?
It's providing.
Oh, gosh, we have a staff of probably, well, when you account, our financial department, our peer recovery support team, our cognitive instructors, I would say there are ten, twelve people that spend a portion of their time, not full, but a portion of their time in making sure that these services, that the people who are assigned to us are successful in the conditions. And again, I would just also offer, all of those services are at no charge to the participant, like when they can't afford.
We don't charge the participants for anything.
For anything.
Yeah.
Chris, I've got a question related to that. So I know that we've come up, we've talked a lot about, you know, not charging paying monitors, and it goes back to the conversation about what's best practice. You mentioned something that spurred a thought in my mind. So all the individuals and participants that are in sober living, are you still monitoring them?
So long as, yes, sir.
Okay. So you said that private money pays for one month of sober living?
Correct.
How, who pays for the rest? And my question, so that and a follow-up question would be that if the participant then pays for their sober living experience, are they still qualified as indigent, meaning they still can't pay for, do you see where I'm headed? So if they, they don't pay for any transportation, they don't pay for their ankle monitoring system, but they're paying for sober living, it seems to me that there would be no way to legally qualify them as indigent. I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, how are you able to force them to pay for sober living but not for an ankle monitoring program, or like transportation, some of those things to help maybe recoup some of those costs?
Yes, sir, it's a great question. I would just go back, it's too bold. I would go back and make sure that the budget equalization team understands that in the MOU with the county, it says that we will abide by best practices, national best practices in the advisory board, and I think I'm about to offend somebody, and I apologize in advance, but the advisory board that oversees the pretrial services, that's comprised of Judge Stoner and all the great people, have also very clearly said they want this program to abide by best practices. Best practices says that you cannot charge a person for a court order condition when they cannot afford to pay it.
Right.
And so we don't charge anybody for anything, because the folk that we are serving are indigent, and I know exactly where you're going, so if you give me just ten seconds to make this statement, I would say to you that the average time that a person spends in the detention center before they're released on a conditional bond at this point in time is eight days. That's on the average, and we're trying, you know, we would love it if it were one day, or, you know, two days, whatever it takes, but again, the decision makers have said that they want the folks that are coming out to us to be fully vetted before we get them, and they're putting the conditions on them, and then we're enforcing those conditions. I can tell you that there's nobody who has the wherewithal to pay for a bond that's gonna opt to stay in the detention center over a week. And that's on average somewhere along. The other part of that is, how do they pay for their sober living after, you know, a month? We also provide employment services. Again, free of charge for anybody that doesn't have a job when they come out, which are most people, we connect them with jobs. And so the hope is, and... And so the hope is, and and the model is, that after thirty days, they're going to start paying their own way at that sober living house, which is roughly a hundred, a hundred twenty-five dollars a week.
Yeah.
But here's the thing, the jobs that we're able to connect the people with, and we're pretty successful at that, are are primarily minimum wage jobs. And so it's, that's where their paycheck is going. If, once we get them in in that rhythm, some people don't stay at the sober living, and sometimes they just stay there for the thirty days, and they secure housing, you know, at other places. We are happy, I mean, I would tell you without a heartbeat, if if somebody were to say to us, incorporate a a test, a an indigent, an indigency, indigency test to determine, happy to do that. I mean, there's just no question. And listen, I love the people, I I we advocate for the people that we get to serve, we believe in the people that we get to serve. They're indigent. There's there's no, they're, we're not serving the folks that can can afford to to pay a bond to get out.
So sober living, though, is is that not a condition of their release?
Generally not.
Okay. Okay. So that that was what, that was my.
They they want them, they they want them, let me let me clarify, they want them living sober, but they're not saying you have to live in a sober living house. Transition house. And there are plenty of people that are placed on a conditional bond that don't go to a sober living house. They they have, they have.
Well, yeah, they don't have drug problems, right.
Well, even 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 some who who may battle with addiction still have a home to go to, if not, not everybody. But yeah, certainly, keeping a person in recovery is, I mean, we drug test everybody. Everybody that's placed on a condition, I can tell, I can promise you, one of their conditions is is drug tests.
Sure. And just out of curiosity, I mean, do you know how much the ankle monitor costs per month, per person?
I can, I I don't, but I can, I can, I would say, I don't want to, can I send the text real quick?
Yeah.
If you'll keep talking to me, I'll get, I'll get.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, I was, I was, I was actually, I was actually under the impression that that going to some sort of treatment facility was a condition of their release, that's why I.
Well, no, let me not misspeak. Treatment is a condition.
Okay. Sometimes they do that by way of the sober house.
So what what they're going to say is they have to be compliant with a treatment plan.
Okay.
And so what that means for some people is that they're involved in outpatient treatment, you know, in addition, the condition is that they're compliant in going to a North Care or a Hope or a Red Rock or something like that. Some people may be required to go to inpatient treatment. And if that's the condition, we will take them, we will connect them with an inpatient treatment provider and transport them there and back.
So so let's, so using the example of somebody, let's say they go to North Care, what's that person's cost? Is it that three to for them to go to North Care?
We're we're, well, until, and I'm not trying to make a lot of this very serious, but there is a indigent fund available through the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse to pay for people's treatment who have no other source of funding, and and that's what we utilize. We don't, we don't pay for that treatment, but we connect them with a source of funding for that treatment. We we, so our case, our case manager, Brandon, I hope I'm asking or answering your question, we try to, we try to connect every resource that's available in the state of Oklahoma to the individual.
I I guess, maybe maybe I should just wrap this up, maybe in this type of question. So if somebody's assigned to a conditional bond release, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, even, if somebody's assigned to a conditional bond release, they pay for nothing out of pocket to meet that conditional bond.
If they're assigned to us.
And then to follow up.
Except for sober living.
Indigent thing in the ankle monitors. So none of these six hundred and ninety people that are today on a conditional bond are currently employed outside of those that you found in employment. So for instance, Joe's picked up, I have a job, I did something stupid, I go to jail, I put on a conditional bond, I still keep my employment. So everybody that you're seeing was not employed?
I would say that that, it would be rare. If so, if 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 for the employer that's going to let a person keep their employment after not showing up to work for eight, ten, fifteen days is is a rare employer, I would tell you that there are folk who find jobs themselves with very little help from from us directly.
Okay, so maybe I should rephrase. They're not employable.
No, they're they're.
But but for me sitting in jail for eight days, I have this job, but I get out, and I'm able to go get another job.
Sure.
That's not indigent.
See, Mr. Speaker, I think where some folks around the table that have been here.
And you're one hundred, and Chris is one hundred percent correct, the contract language says best practices, and that's something that needs to seriously be considered. So this is not, Chris didn't do this.
And you don't determine indigence. But well, the, I think those that are around the table that have been here for a while and know the way our old program worked, I think where the confusion lies is that that program, I would say, Joe, correct me if you have a different remembrance of this, but at least half, but I would say a vast majority of the folks that were assigned to our court services program that had ankle monitor conditions were not deemed indigent and were paying for them themselves. At at least a fifty-fifty.
There was, there was a good number of people, I won't, I don't know that, but you're correct. That that's why we had that that fee fund that was.
Right, we had fifty thousand dollars a year that was going in it. And I think that's where it's, it's, it is kind of odd to us that saw and knew that we had many people in our program that were not deemed indigent, that were paying for it, that all of a sudden, overnight, now everybody's indigent and nobody is in the same situation that they were in before when we had the program. Does that make sense?
I I understand that perspective. I I can tell you, happy to look you in the eyes and tell you that the people that we get to serve aren't going to be able to pay for the services, not not at least all of the conditions that are placed upon them to be in the program. And and like, what I'm suggesting in like, want to, want to be a team player, because we really do believe, we believe in our county, we believe in our community, we believe in this initiative. If if somebody would tell us, incorporate a an indigent assessment, that, I mean, it's another step, and that that takes time and staff time and everything else, but we're willing to do whatever we're supposed to do. And to 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 Mr. Wallace's point, I, today, hopefully, we have done what we've been told to do.
Well, I I think the judiciary determines the indigence. I don't think you would need to, I think that would be something that.
So be it. I mean, like, we're, I I, I'm, we're happy to to accommodate for that. I I can just tell you that, what is it, June to to today, almost not, well, I'm just telling you, the people that we serve aren't going to be able to financially, and and the last thing we want to do is to set a person back simply because they don't have sufficient funds in their in their bank account. And that's a philosophical thing, and I know all that, can, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that the answer is, it costs us three dollars and twenty cents a day to to monitor a person on an ankle monitor, so it's just under a hundred dollars a month.
So I've got a few follow-up questions based upon what we've, what we've discussed. First, going back to the conversation you were having with Joe about the NCIC, and you said they determined that, who is they?
I think it's ultimately Miss Behenna.
Is that statutory that they make that determination?
I I don't want to speak for the individual, they they had just determined that a law enforcement entity had to be able, the organization that that sent the people to get the training, to get the credentials.
Okay. Because I'm just curious, because you're saying other jurisdictions are different, I wonder if there's state law here that specifies versus other.
I have a bank planner, but it could very well be.
Brandon knows, I think it's the rules, the federal guidelines.
Well, but if it's the federal guidelines, there's other entities that are utilizing contracts, some providers are doing it.
And, oh, go ahead.
On that point, real quick, so if if we find other jurisdictions are doing, we can find a way for you guys to do the summaries. Is that an additional cost? You said you had already anticipated with the original contract, you would be doing that. You're not, then we're paying for individuals in detention center to do it, is there, would there be a cost associated with it, if we get it worked out?
What I can tell you is that this contract, again, and I know this is like, I just want to validate, I know what I'm about to say is like, now's the time to talk forward, but but this contract allows us to keep caseloads, the the number of participants per case manager at a level that allows for higher supervision and in accordance with national accreditation standards, so.
Where we kind of get into this, though, too, is we just were talking to the jail about, I mean.
Sure.
We can't always have the exact number of people per caseload, and I talked to the public defender's office, the DA's office, all that, so we just may not be able to get to to that. Joe, you may be able to help me with this. When you were discussing the incentives and the bus passes, back when we had the program in-house, I know we provided bus passes. Do you recall, I was, for some reason, I was thinking that we got those for free.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, but.
Have you, have you looked into that to see if that was the case? And if it's the case that maybe the county can get them donated, you just can't as a nonprofit, since this is a county program, could we request the bus passes instead of you going and buying them? Maybe we can save thirty-six thousand dollars that way?
Happy, happy to, listen, I'm I'm happy to turn over every rock. I I will tell you what we do. We buy them at, I mean, we're a nonprofit, we're not, we're not, you understand, so every every penny counts for us. And and what what we do is we buy them when we can maximize the purchase. And then, Mr. Chairman, we also apply for grants, and you get an additional, maybe two hundred, two hundred bus passes, hundred seventy-five to two hundred bus passes to that grant that we apply for every year. And and that goes, you know, as far as we can make it go to to everybody. But even with that grant, that for those two hundred, three bus passes, we still need a ton of bus passes to keep people moving in the right direction. What we've found out is that people tend to to become what they're encouraged to be and what they're what they're supported to be, and if a person is trying hard, and we know that that person is trying hard, but they need help with transportation to to make it, that's what these incentives are utilized for.
Okay. And finally.
But if there's a way to get them for free, count us in.
Okay. Finally, my my third follow-up, when you had mentioned OR versus conditional bond, and you threw out, you said that you didn't know, I mean, could an increase of five hundred, whatever that number is, is it safe to assume, though, that those OR situations would be folks that you already have on conditional bond anyway?
Not necessarily.
You think there's folks that are so low level that they would qualify for an OR under a new program that they could not get approved by a judge on a conditional bond currently?
What I'm, what I'm saying is, I think that there are more people, I think that there are people who are out on OR bond who may be assigned to us. It's not going to be an additional cost, per se, because all we're doing is sending a text. I don't know that they're currently getting a text message any other way, right? So I think that more people who are on OR may come, may make their way to this program this for the remainder.
So people that are out on an OR right now, they may not be coming to you at all?
Right. I I can just tell you, everybody that we have has conditions right now, because that's what the the decision makers want.
Let me, let me try to help, because I, if if there hadn't been a change in the way things were operating, it's my assumption that you would have more people on ORs and not receiving Chris's services through conditional bond. And what you're saying is, once they get the validated tool, we may see the conditional bond numbers stay where they're at or slightly increased because now the judges.
I get that part, I was going to say this on the conditional bond, but on the OR piece, I I.
So theoretically, the number of people that they're serving on conditional could go down once that's.
That's what I was, that's what I was kind of getting at, that I would think that that's what we are likely to see more with the validated tool, is the percentage of folks that you have on OR goes up in the conditional bond.
You're only seeing three people, but there's a ton of people out on OR bonds.
To us, to us.
Right, just to them. There's a bunch of people.
My idea was that they had stopped all of the ORs.
Well, I don't think they can. Like, for example, there's a, there's a threshold out there where, like, for example, if I get arrested on public info, they can't keep me past a certain point, I'm automatically kicked out.
The walk through.
Well.
Is that what you're talking about?
Right. I mean, i- if you get arrested, you, I mean, there's a, there's, I mean, unless unless it's changed entirely, maybe so. But I mean, back in, back in the day when I used to run around with the OR, CBR crew, you know, with Grant and his people, when they would come into jail, there's a lot of people that, I mean, I would be shocked, I mean, I wish the jails were, I'd be shocked if they're not, we're not, there's not a ton of ORs that just happen purely by default.
But we had, we had, when we were, when we had the in-house program, and maybe I'm completely wrong on this, but I thought we had quite a few ORs that we were supervising, supervising.
The text message.
Yeah. On a monthly, daily, weekly, whatever basis. So my question is, where are those folks now? My thought and interpretation from what you've said is that those folks, not the ones that are, you know, in on a charge that's just a walkthrough situation, those others that we used to have, they're just, they're not getting out because the DA's office won't process anybody on an OR side, it has to go conditional. So that's kind of my point. If if my assumptions are correct based upon what I've heard, then if the ORs do increase, it would be from the same population pool that you have right now on conditional, because I would seriously doubt that there's somebody that's in the jail that, the only ones in the jail, I'm I'm assuming that have been worked up, are ones that are in on exclusionary charge, and they ain't getting an OR, right? So the others that are over there would have been worked up by your folks. And so I would assume that if you can't get them out right now, that with a validated tool, they're not going to get out on an OR, they're not going to jump from not getting out past conditional bond to OR. I would think that you may increase, you may get some different people out on conditional bond that you currently can't get out, but if your OR increases, I would think that would be a deduction from your current conditional bond pool.
Right. And I don't know that we're saying different things, other than to to go back to what, you may be right, maybe, maybe we'll, and we're half a step away, I mean, I think we're three months, hopefully by, you know, by July first, by by, I mean, as as soon as everybody gets trained and understands, I mean, we've done the first part of that training already, so we're well on our way to incorporating the standard assessment. But I do think it could also mean that more people do get out on a conditional bond, because there are folks that that are being denied right now because they have stuff in their background that's causing the decision makers to cock an eyebrow or to say, ah, we're not sure about this person. And the decision is to not let them out on a conditional bond. The people that we're getting out on a conditional bond are are people that, for the most part, everybody feels good about, obviously, or we wouldn't, we wouldn't be serving them. And I think that there's this gray area, not the exclusionary, that'll never be the case, they won't even be worked up, to use your terminology. But I do think that there's another group that some, I'm not going to say it's going to be everybody, but with, you know, a scientific impartial assessment, the courts may say, well, it looks like this person has not, you know, for whatever, and and we can let them out. So I think that that, I don't, Tom will tell, Tom will tell.
Do you have anybody on CBR right now that should be on an OR?
Do you have anybody on CBR right now that should be on an OR bond? I mean, you, you know.
I, uh.
Yes.
Out of six hundred and ninety-one, I would say yes. I don't think it's a lot, but I, I do think that there are some.
But regardless of whether the numbers go up or down, your contract has a cap on it, and you only get paid for services rendered.
That's correct.
That you invoice the county for, so it's not like, if there's a big jump in numbers, all of a sudden, the invoices are going to start exceeding what we have.
Right.
In the contract.
This, this, yes, we don't, we don't get paid, there's not a lump sum that gets, we, we only get paid for what we document, that we provide.
And the reason why I said yes so quickly was just back to, and I'm not a crime statistics expert or area area, but if we would have had a drastic change in the types and frequencies of crimes, like, more violent, way worship, we would be hearing about it, I would think. And since we haven't, maybe there has been some uptick, but we had so many out on ORs before in our program that I, I would, I would hazard the guess that the population by and large looks the same as it did ten months ago, right? I mean, we're not talking ten years ago, we're talking ten months ago, twelve months ago, thirteen, fourteen months ago, when we had our, you know, the, the in-house program, same types of people, same types of crimes. And we had a bunch out on ORs then, I would think that, that some types of crimes and histories are, statistically speaking, still part of the mix. And that's where I'm coming from on the percentage of ORs that are your conditional now. That's also where I'm coming from on the rate of indigency, you know, from before versus now, I just.
Mr. Chairman, we're all saying the same thing, and I would, I would also, I, I think the standardized assessment, and, and again, this is, in, in my estimation, and, and again, to, I'm sorry, Kathy, to Joe's, to Joe's point, the, um, the, um, assessment's not costing us anything, it's, it's free, but it's part of that, um, that practices. And I think at the end of the day, it's going to help us make sure, make a better determination all the way around who should be out. And, and what level of services they should be provided, and I'm just seeing some experts that, that came in, if you guys want to talk to the decision makers about.
No, we'll get to it, we'll get to the end of that. Just kidding. Does anybody else have anything? All right, if not, is there a motion to receive the estimate of needs as presented, well, I guess it's not. Technically, estimate of needs. Receive the, uh, the budget proposal from team or at like twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, group families program.
Well, sure, see.
Motion said it? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
I just have it, and our extending person is not in here, so. Mr. Speaker, thank you. Thanks for coming by and being available in the program. All right, this is us here, us.
Should be a budget request.
Everybody located in your vote? All right, go ahead, Russ, uh, let's start with, uh, your two hundred, say.
Uh, we requested twenty-six thousand five hundred more this year to last. And I'd like to remind everybody that this money's already worth like state, from our state budget. Increased parking on like fourteen thousand, but not requested, he's not, I don't think for all of it this year. I requested ten thousand for cell phones, Alatino's delivery volume fund, funds in free day. It's bonus check funds, and we're just not collecting much in bonus check anymore. I requested nineteen hundred extra for professional services, which is the interpreters for, for hearings. And I'm going to show them those as well.
Okay, anybody have any questions? If not, let's move to two-ten.
Two-ten, uh, I requested a total of net interest of three dollars. I cut out travel, we just have a travel to last year. And, uh, request for the popular lease increase of a thousand, popular contract is expired, has a two-thirty. And what if I read okay, read up for five more years? Five more years, let's talk here, please.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion to receive the estimate of needs from the district attorney's office, both on two-hundred and two-ten? Thank you. Doing seconds. We got a motion second, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Aye, seven. Thanks, Russ. Kelly, yeah, that one's here. All right, Kelly.
And it's pretty much at the bottom, um, you know, we had a couple of them there, so we need to cut out. And the difference in calories is just American, you know. So, and then, and then the other was just, you do not need.
All right, Kelly, thank you.
Sorry.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion to receive the twenty-five, twenty-six estimate of needs for your election board?
Move, second.
Got a motion second, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Aye, seven. Thank you, Kelly. All right. Bridgette. Is everybody located, the public defender's budget in the book?
Here, just asking for the Senate Department increases.
Okay, so just talk about some decrease. Too easy.
Motion to receive.
We got a motion to receive the estimate of needs for public defender for twenty-five, twenty-six, zero second. Got a motion second, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thanks, Bridgette.
And then on the drug court fund. I have four. We thought it was good. These are easy, these are easy.
They're going to be back on special revenue.
And those, um, they're, um, drug court and mental health court basically are all against drug court fund now. Those, um, those are all grants and things that are seen, and so it's obvious that's out.
All right, trust me, yes.
I can't find it in the screen.
I know. I think. Special revenue, if you go to the sheriff's one, the lavender, it's the one right at the front.
It says dark, dark.
You got one more blue to go, go. Go, thank you.
I just have one, I was showing you. Um, there's the balance, I guess that's.
Yes, on the mental health court fund and the community sentencing, both of those are, are already in there, and they're both just carrying.
So we just can't leave those, they're really doing. There's a community sentencing now, kind of little. I wonder if we can use that one. Rather than just sit there. I wonder if that's money we could use to supplement.
On the community sentencing, I, we've talked about that in years past, about what we can do with it, and you've never.
Well, we.
We think our community sentencing routine.
And I think the only issue there is that team is obviously pre-trial, community sentencing is.
Post. It was that old county department that Jerry was the director. Yeah, and went over to DOC team, I think has the contract for that piece now, but it's.
They do have that contract with the state.
Yeah.
Which is weird, we just leave it sitting.
We gotta be able to do something. Bridgette, we're going to task you with finding out what we can do with that for September seventh. You got a few months.
I was like, oh, put it towards ten.
Anybody have any questions on the special revenue accounts of the public defender's office?
I don't have any, I'm just.
Okay. All right, we've not been officially receiving those, so, the special revenues, so. If we did, we'd just do those all in a loan, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bridgette. All right, Dane?
Yes, I, yep. I'm interpreting my bits. Yeah. I just didn't get the back, man out of tap. About half an inch, anything is going.
It's under the red.
No, I heard the other.
I abstained before.
All right. All right, ready? Somebody ready, looks like it. We're referring. It's about this far in.
See, I forgot before.
I'm gonna make it easy, while I'm asking. Okay, done.
You're not asking for anything? I'll better find that page.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'll look at the screen. Okay. All right, let's start simple, on our capital, the only difference in our capital that we're asking for this year is for an upgrade to our core switching, those things we like to do every five years, it's been seven. We do in twenty-eighteen, twenty-five, so. Uh, the number that we put in is a quote as of probably a couple of months ago, when we were configuring this. There's no telling what it's going to be, and you guys are noticeable as well as I do, what it's going to become, you know, September or whenever we get funded for. Any questions on that? Other than that, it's the same. So, the, the quote that you had, is it go through a particular period of time? And you said you got it when? Couple of months ago, so it's probably not even valid anymore from the time we turned this in. But I was just thinking if you're anticipating some big jumps in some of the. Anticipating any, I have no idea what's going to happen. Ask me tomorrow. As soon as possible, fiscal core stuff can be exempted. Yeah, but if, if we get a, a big price break by doing it sooner rather than later, then maybe we can look at using reserve dollars to get it done this fiscal year instead of waiting until next fiscal year. If it's going to be a big. If you want me to refresh the quote, would that idea?
The quote he's asking is the tariffs going to kill us here?
Right.
Yeah, they might, or they might not. I would say. Or they might today, it might not tomorrow. I would say refresh the quote, just so. Okay. Yeah, good idea. I can do that. But I mean, we're, I'm living in that world that's, we don't know what anything's going to cost right now, as far as hardware goes. Some of them may be affected, some of them may not be affected, some of them may be exempted, I don't know. I mean, outside of this, at least, we don't need anything huge, we don't need any new storage, we don't need any new, uh, server host, or any like that, because we did that within the last couple of years, so I don't need to double it for, I don't need to double this for DR. This is straight date, annex and location related, so, you know, and even then, I'm not even replacing chassis, I'm just replacing supervisors and late, which helps a little bit on the cost, so. Hey, uh, Joe, I'm going to mention this since I'm on the other side of the table now. If we can't do that with reserve, do you know if there's PBA funds available to, much anymore, to replace those core switches?
You got to pay your rent, or will be.
People don't pay their rent?
You can ask a smart aleck question, I'll give you a smart aleck.
All right, to M and O, uh, as is typical, we generally ask for a five-day increase or a five-year increase. We expect most of the time, like, what the costs go up, you work five days, and some of them we can endure, some of them we can't. Some will go up, some won't, it's, it's likely that a lot of the stuff that we have that's on state contract, probably will stay the same price, like the phones or some, you know, what we paid for on the proposal, but new circuits are always being asked of us from various, you know, new projects that are coming up. Tyler always goes up, Remedy Street always goes up, um, those things like that, Carpel, the, you know, the DA and, and, uh, public defender's software always goes up, it just does. So, that is not new, and then what we're asking for is not a, it's not aligned with any other year we request. Some of the, to explain, some of the other gaps, though, in the M and O hit, we have, because we've not taken on Esri, that money gets, uh, brought over to us that we didn't have, obviously, this last year, so it inflates that number, makes it look a little more deadly than it, you know, normally would. Any questions on that?
Do you have, I know last year I refunded, it had to do with the DA, the connectsus and Allied Universal.
Correct.
Forty-two-fourth.
Yeah. We do not need connectsus this year, because our programming team wrote a replacement program for Kathy Taylor, the DA's office.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's only twenty-four hundred dollars, but we're, we're.
So nothing, nothing in that, but you have to do what?
Can actually, anything like that.
He said to the past, I think, clearly, so.
The program should.
We did actually, I'm not sure, we need, I mean, we don't have a hundred anyway. I mean, not perfect. Connects us.
Generally expensive.
At IT, well, I think it was about moving over to us, but it never did. It's, like I said, it's small now, it's like twenty-four hundred dollars, connectsus was.
And then the other one you asked about, Chrissy.
Allied Universal, it was forty-two thousand.
That was for the. Yeah, once again, not a, it, it never actually did.
It got paid out of.
What was it? Did, 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 did they give, you know, the, one of the court service special revenue accounts?
Maybe.
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't cut the, we didn't.
But I think there was a mixture of, you gotta get an handle on all of that.
I know.
I think the way that happened, there was balance, and then we finally got some deposits in there for people who were paying for ankle monitoring, and now whether that, those deposits continue.
I don't know.
Yeah.
If I may. Um. So, yes, that's correct, deposits that Kathy Taylor is, uh, receiving goes towards paying the ankle monitoring. Also, whenever we looked and had the discussion of the last E T meeting, um, in regards to Kathy Taylor's benefits. So I collected a check of a little over eight thousand dollars that also has been deposited into the court services account that we're paying for those ankle monitors as well, so. Um, and then moving forward, if the contract stays with the DA, um, for that decision. Uh, then they will have a contract, um, with Allied Universal, the board, and will, um, invoice us on reimbursement for that cost. They just didn't want to do a contract in the middle, especially if you'd be, uh, just took back the salary.
Okay.
Want to make sure we.
Yeah, I count four.
All of those expenses into that court services.
Yeah, we ended up not having any of those expenses by the time it all figured out. Okay, uh, moving on to salary and the adjustments there. Uh, this year, remember back in December, we hired a applications, special, applications training specialist, Microsoft applications training specialist. We got funded six months for that, obviously we needed, well, twelve months for that. Uh, also, same goes with the two Esri guys that came over from the assessor's office, so that full year, so that's part of the big jump. The rest of the jump is, or mostly the rest of the jump is, and I talked about this a couple of years ago and brought it to you guys, but bringing it back, because you guys asked for numbers, so I have numbers that hopefully have been passed around. But talk about pay parity with department and how it relates to other IT offices and other government agencies, and what I've handed you is. I believe these are the twenty twenty-three numbers for Tulsa County in the positions that relate to. It's close to an apples apples compared to, to positions that we have. So, if you look at, what we, we talked about doing is raising our level three salary up to ninety K, our level two salary up to seventy K, and our level one's up to fifty. Which, if you look at the, um. Infrastructure administrator two, that would be something similar to, since engineer two. Those are making close to eighty-five, and I'm not even, not even asking for that yet. I'm just trying to get them up to something a little bit closer, same with the level three, you know, the infrastructure engineer three position. There's still quite a discrepancy in what I'm asking for.
So the yearly is what Tulsa's paying?
As of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
I haven't seen the one, I don't think, I think these are twenty-three numbers. Uh, same with the information security analyst, I put the names of the people out to kind of give you an idea of who it is that, uh, relates in terms of the position.
You've lost staff, Ezra.
I have lost staff. Almost two, I saved the one, couldn't save the other one. I mean, these are the, these are the team that keep everything. Nothing works without.
Without objection, the chair will ask the program to stop.
You guys have any questions other than that? That's all I have.
While you're here, I'll, I'll mention this, because I, I would like to see this from you, but I wanted to kind of talk to the group, I just kind of thought. About maybe trying to get this from everybody. If we wind up taking the flat budget approach like we've done in the past, look at any additions in the supplement. Think one thing that we should do is, Dane had mentioned that something that was funded at six months, but it wasn't annualized. I think part of the issue that we get into where we lose this stuff is we stay flat and then we don't annualize. September supplement, we need a list from people in their budget that says, hey, part of my request. Is this six months for this person's annualized portion, you've already given it to me, so to me. You staying flat is adding that six months for the annualization. Now, whether we do that at July or whether we do it in September, if we have that list of things that should be in there but aren't. I, I think it might help us from missing some stuff, because I think when we were talking about the transfer from purchasing to the clerk's office, from clerk's office. To, uh, no, to commissioners, from commissioners to HR, and then back to commissioners, we just, we lose. Track of some of those numbers, and when we lose track of some of the numbers, they compound over time, and then we wind up with a two-year issue or whatever. So, I, I would like you to provide that, because I, I think you also have. Some new employees that came over.
Right.
From the assessor's office.
Two from the assessor's, one from.
And one from social services, so you got partial year funding in there.
How would you like me to not take that on this sheet, does that need to be something, does that need to be a line item on?
No, you don't necessarily have to change this, just, just send, um, send the clerk's office an email.
Okay.
We'll kind of talk about this a little bit more in depth, this is kind of one of those, uh, discussion-related policies and procedures, whatever. Uh, the gen item that we have, that I, I just kind of had that thought, and I wanted to throw it out while I was thinking about it. For us to start tracking those annualized pieces, and then hopefully, as we go through a fiscal year, when we approve the transfer. We add it to a list immediately, so we're not having to just rely on catching it at estimate of needs time.
Okay.
And that could be something that your B O C C department, the, um. Your, the finance administrator piece would, should be able to track that stuff for you guys, and then. This is elected official offices can track that as well and get it to the clerk's office, however you want it.
I will go ahead and mention, uh, the new position that we ask for is, is, we're losing, obviously, we're losing all the, like, that's at the end of fiscal year. So the new position we've asked for is essentially what Jeff, the role Jeff is currently portraying now, but he becomes the new Art. So it's like a junior art, you know, that one's a junior Jeff. We'll start looking for that one probably in July.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Dane? Other than I was, that have already been asked? If not, is there a motion to receive the estimate needs for MIS for five, twenty-five, twenty-six? Motion is it? Second?
Second.
A motion, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Abstention?
Yeah.
You have, you have rescuing this abstention face.
We didn't expect.
The old RAF. Low expectations. All right. Okay, sit there one for guys real quick. Yeah.
Perfect look on your face.
Yeah, so guys, we've got, it's a youth left, but to my recollection, it is. Lucky official offices that are around the table that are here at all of our meetings. We've got at least a couple of people that need to, to roll out of here quick. Do we, it is about ten after two. You guys want to press on, or do we want to recess this and come back and do the remaining three estimate needs? We won't have to schedule with anybody.
The remaining.
It's sheriff's office, district three and district ten.
And then Jessica has an update.
Yeah.
Could Jessica come back with information?
Let's go.
But I.
Could you have to leave, Ralph, do you want to go first?
No, I don't have to leave.
Who has to leave?
Joe.
Joe.
Genesee's.
Genesee's here, yeah.
I say let's do it, I mean, I can't.
How long?
Yeah, that's good. What, Joe?
How long do you reckon? You won't take you long, right?
No.
You won.
Jessica might be.
I'll say for fifteen minutes.
Okay, all right. Yeah. Because I'm bland. Okay. All right, and Jessica, go ahead and, let's go ahead and get Jessica's.
Okay.
You know what, while you're passing it out, Brandy, you, do you mind going?
No, I don't mind going, no, mine's easy.
Then be as official.
Yeah, yeah, um, I mean, I could even talk while I'm trying to find it. Um, district two is easy, um, the only ask, we, everything else is flat, the only thing that we are asking for. Is, um, we have been getting requests for special projects from schools in our district. And typically, in years past, we do, we did have special projects funded, um, at about a hundred thousand dollars, the line item that we have. Um, the past couple, three years, we have taken that off. Uh, but now we would like to put that back on, there are some schools that need some assistance, we would like to do special projects for. Um, I know the other two districts, um, are budgeted for that in general fund as well, and so mildly ask for the hundred thousand dollars, uh, for a special project.
But he's not being.
I'm sorry.
Yes, they are.
That's it, everything else is the same, same.
And it looks like, uh, similar to what Joe mentioned yesterday on district one, it looks like you're paying. Several of your folks out of both general funding and.
Yes, which is historically what we do, yeah, well, we're just, we're just maintaining, uh, what we typically do. And like I said, in years past, we did have a hundred thousand budgeted for special projects, we dropped that off the past couple, just to kind of try to crunch. Uh, but we are having some schools ask us, um, we did actually pass some general mutual agreements with all of our social districts today. Um, to hopefully have those in place to be able to, um, entertain doing some projects for this year, at least one.
Okay. Any questions on the D two budget? Estimate needs, I should say. If not, is there a motion to receive estimate needs for the five, twenty-five, twenty-six for district two?
Motion.
Yeah. You got a motion, we have a second?
Sure.
You got a motion, a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Raffi?
Yeah. All right, um.
Thank you for.
Yeah. So these that you just passed out are.
Those are, um, whole punched and signed, and the one that has the changes is the, uh, general government. But I just wanted you to have the signed copy. And you whole punched, and I whole punched, I heard someone say they're not whole punched, so I whole punched for you. So, um, under general fund, uh, some questions that you had.
General fund, general government?
Yes, yes, general fund, general government. If you're taking them out, just put them in the middle of the table and we will pick them up.
Okay, go ahead, Jessica.
Okay. Uh, so, under general fund, general government, uh, looking over the. This page here in regards to the M and O. Um, questions that you had from yesterday, um, under insurance premiums, I did confirm with HR that she spoke to our insurance carrier. And that they were anticipating a twenty to twenty-five percent increase, and so, uh, that was correct. It was, um, right into, from Karen. Another, um, question that you had, which I provided, provided a real quick summary in regards to our, our outside professional services. And there was an requested, um, increase, uh, for, uh, four hundred thousand to cover potential additional outside, um, legal costs. And I gave you a breakdown of what, um, our Cassie's. Of what we budgeted, um, for last year, we budgeted, um, well, six hundred thousand was what was in the budget. And we had contracts for five hundred and forty thousand of that. As of today, there's four hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty cents remaining, and so, um, so far, what's been invoiced is ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents. So I just wanted to give you an idea of where we're at in regards to those contracts. And from my experience over the past two years of working with these attorneys on those contracts, as many of these are cases that are still rolling over year to year. And so just wanted, in that direction, um, the chiefs that are here from the commissioners, and then I guess this. Committee in regards to, if you feel like there's, it's necessary for a four hundred thousand dollar increase, um, we definitely. Think that the way it is. But that was something that was asked of you from yesterday.
I don't know, it needs to be four hundred thousand, but there's definitely cases that roll over year to year. Well, it's, the question isn't four hundred thousand, it's an increase of four hundred.
Right.
And the invoice amount on, this is all the outside legal for this year, so we've only, we've spent ninety-eight thousand dollars.
That money's gonna all roll back, we can just re-appreciate that for.
Absolutely.
They would have submitted that contract at that amount if they didn't think we were eventually gonna expand, you know how it works.
I, I, I get that, but I'm just saying, I don't, I don't see, I mean, do we really think we need to increase by four hundred?
I don't think forty thousand dollars would be necessary at this time, I would say we put some amount in there, maybe a hundred thousand. We, we never know what cases are gonna be filed and when the DA is gonna, um, recuse. That being said, if we have a hundred thousand, that would at least enable us the ability to enter into a contract with the firm, come back to, uh, E T. And openly budget for it and ask for more money out of reserve to cover legal expenses, so I think it's prudent to put some additional sum in. And by the way, we're gonna probably buy us back to fund these contracts.
Agreed.
But I, I don't, I don't think it's four hundred dollars.
Okay.
But who knows, July one, we might get slammed.
Yeah, I mean, we can always watch list it as well, you know, whether it's the full four hundred or whether we find a hundred thousand and then watch.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, I think, I mean, based on experience, you recall, we had to go out and hire outside counsel, because somebody brought in, uh, Department of Labor and whoever else, and we had to defend ourselves on that. I mean, right, so. There are those times that we need to be able to move fast, having these funds available allows us to go, so I think a hundred thousand would be appropriate increase. Over whatever the balance is on this.
Would you like for me to proceed in regards to that amount? Keep the one million budgeted or lower it?
Make it eleven.
Seven, okay.
Increase by a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand. Done. Hundred thousand. Done. I'll do that. Any other questions regarding outside legal?
Alright, so you'll resubmit this one at seven hundred, seven hundred and seventy million?
Do I need to, um, can I email a copy to each one of the committee members and provide Cassie? Does that sound good? Or do I need to?
No, you won't need to present, but we'll need to receive.
Okay.
The updated one.
So, and just send one to some clear to each one of the committee members and Cassie?
And just send it to Cassie.
And Cassie can sort of that. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, professional services DA, um, there was a, a decrease and of sixty-two thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and three cents. I did confirm with Erin Eddington in regards to that decrease. Um, and also asked, uh, because, uh, committee members requested this of me, the number of cases. So in twenty twenty-four, they closed sixteen major litigation cases, seventeen, uh, tort claims, and sixty-three property and tax cases for the county. Um, she did not, uh, provide her future litigation in advance of the meeting. Um, and also in regards to Mr. Nelson, um, his question, there are no cases in which, um, that they have had to conflict out of the representation of the county based on the representation of the, um, criminal justice authority. Should the situation like that come up, our ethical rules would be to actually require us to conflict out representing both the county and the authority, and both entities would have a prior, have to hire private possible, to which I was saying in regards to possible. So, um, that is the response that I got from Erin Eddington. Are there any other questions? No questions? Okay. I made the adjustment of the OU extension, which was a decrease. Um, it, it's the same amount that was last year's, um, but what had been put in here previously was the, the five, um, five hundred eighty thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. I believe that was their increase, um, due to the salaries that they requested. And so, but it shows a, a decrease, but it's really flat compared to what it was last time. And I believe that's the reason why I didn't put that in there. But, um, any other questions in regards to the general fund?
Let's do this to make it a little easier on Cassie. Uh, is there a motion to receive the updated estimate of needs for general government with the amendment of seven hundred thousand dollars as the FY twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget in line five, four, four, five, one, outside legal? That way, it doesn't have to come back here. It's already received. Um, and Cassie can just email it to everybody so we can whole punch it and put it, put it in our book.
Second or first, either one. What's up in here?
Is there a motion?
That was Joe.
You got a motion and a second?
Uh, Joey, just, uh, what about the CGA going up at the end of the general government? I know you guys, CGA presented their budget, so that's kind of incorporated into it.
Yeah, right now, it's, uh.
At the same as previous budget.
We don't make a determination on what somebody's estimate of needs are. That's what the needs are just submitted to us. That Joe and Paul are the ones that made a suggestion to seven hundred thousand, but that relates to their role as county commissioners. So it's kind of their estimate of needs. So I think them making that adjustment on the fly is fine, but I'm not gonna sit here and tell Mike that he has to change his estimate of needs to whatever. I, I don't. So if that's what's submitted here, the thirty-three, seven, twenty-six, four, eighty, and that's what, okay, whoever signed it once, then that's what it is.
Okay. I know, but.
Because this is just the estimate of needs. This isn't our recommendation of funding or anything like that.
Right.
Just the special areas ones. Alright, is there, uh, there was a motion, right?
Yes.
And a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have it.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
You have one extension.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like there wasn't any additional questions in regards to the three there. I didn't remember any. In regards to the general fund county commissioners, um, as stated previously, I provided that for your budget because it wasn't signed earlier. And so that way you have the most recent updated. Um, I did not make any changes to the budget itself or the estimate of me. Um, Chantel and I worked, um, late last night in order to put together an evaluation or analysis, um, as requested by this committee regarding, um, where we're at and, uh, what happened with Commissioner Bloomer's salary during her duration, um, after her resignation. So she is still working on that. She did provide me a document, um, that, and it's not a full analysis. So I would prefer for you to receive the full analysis from her, um, via email, and then have it, if you have any questions, she can answer it unless I, I share it with you. You feel like I should share it with this committee?
You can share if you want. I'm as confused.
Yeah, I felt like it, she sent it to me. And I, and I felt like it, it may be confusing. So I would prefer to wait, um, until she has her full analysis. Since she's not here to explain what she had put together.
I mean, if anybody else wants it, I mean, just let Jessica know and she can port it to you.
And I have copies here, but it's not the full analysis and it doesn't answer that question in regards to Commissioner Bloomer's salary. It does state that we started the budget as of what you had, um, mentioned whenever the thing was presenting, that we started the budget with a deficit since it was a flat budget. And so, um, those amounts were not for the increases that the commissioners did not roll over into this new just clear. There was no amendments made at September supplement either. That's what I have written to you.
So what, what changes did you make on this one?
So we don't need to receive it?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your.
Thanks, Jessica. Um, District Three?
Okay, the one in the book is not the latest version. Did he get? Yep.
General funds.
Sir? Did I get one?
No, I didn't. I get into campus.
Okay, not many things I want to point out. Uh. Uh, you have an L? Uh, you will see independent fire districts. Now, the city of Edmond stopped servicing Deer Creek with ambulance service. So we have been, uh, supplying that or, or paying for that out of ARPA dollars. So this is very similar to what we ran into with Hannah yesterday. Uh, yes, we know when the ARPA dollar run out. That's it. We'll have to find, you know, if we have to find, uh, dollars elsewhere, then we're gonna attempt to do that. This is, uh, important to the commissioner because, I mean, it's ambulance service. We're talking no lives. So, one way or another, we're gonna attempt to fund this. It's either here or elsewhere. Uh, maybe that is something that comes out of the jewel money or some other fund, where we can keep doing that. I don't know. Uh, but we put it on here just in case. Uh, the eighty thousand for project reimbursement. This is Deer Creek Fire is building a new fire station, and, uh, we have offered to do the, the, uh, all the grading at the new station for them when they go. And that's, so that's the labor and materials.
Materials?
Or grading?
Grading.
Materials?
For their, for their, for their new asphalt entrance.
They're not a school.
Yeah, I know.
Almost like a special project for measure data.
No, 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 I get that. It's just, most of our special projects, um, that entity has to provide the materials. Now, this is not.
Is that labor only or we do a labor?
It's labor.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And this is a fire, a fire district, not a school, so would be potentially different.
Uh, about a three acre spot. Uh, professional services, that is for, uh, a contract that we have with Caroline Grace, Estes, who does our, uh, social media communications. And the only other thing is we put on there for now, since there has been no decision yet, we put on there, uh, the Novotix implementation that actually needs to be decreased from forty-five to forty. Uh, but that was if we decide not to fund that through general fund because enough departments aren't interested and D three splits it with emergency management. But again, that depends on everybody's role in that. I have gotten, we have gone around to departments and, uh, we are interested, emergency management is interested. Uh, we did not get an answer from MIS and, or MIS is unsure.
Alright.
And we did not get an answer yet from planning and engineering. So we could potentially have more, but.
We had a Zoom meeting with Novotix yesterday, and we asked them to go ahead and prepare an invoice and contract that we're probably gonna go ahead and just fund it through highway.
Yeah, if we don't get enough interest, otherwise we'll just fund it through our highway.
This has been postponed several.
Well, all, we had talked about a couple of meetings ago, you putting it back on for BET so everybody can kind of go back and talk to their elected official and individuals.
Yeah, I just didn't like this going over.
Yeah, no, 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 that's, that's, that's fine. I completely agree. I'm just saying, be sure at our next meeting.
Yep.
Go ahead and throw that on there so we can have that discussion. We kind of be talking about coming on July 1st.
You gotta push it out of highway cash. I thought you were all I'll do. We join after we've already paid. I'll just catch you some money to cover.
Great.
That way you're not holding up waiting on us. But I'm definitely interested. I have the.
Okay. I'm just pointing the wire that. I got you. It's perfect. And we'll, um, at our, at our next special meeting, we'll have a special meeting here really soon because we're gonna start going over, um, budget stuff. Put it on the next one that we have and we'll have that discussion. Because we do need to move off the highway center on that.
Alright, you say you wanna figure out if I have cash, do you wanna take it out of that fund request? Or you wanna leave it at the, and you mentioned it, forty-five and forty, so.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it would need to be changed regardless anyway. So I'll make the changes and resubmit this.
Okay.
Okay, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and receive this one now so that when you do resubmit it, do you know how you're gonna resubmit it?
Yeah, we should take the, do you want to take this one? Uh, if we did have with EMS, you want to take it out of highway ones and not general corrections.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I'll resubmit it. I'll add it to highway. We'll resubmit that one and I'll take it off here.
So your resubmitted estimated needs for general fund will be exactly like this except in the capital section where it has forty-five thousand dollars for computer software. That'll be gone.
Correct.
Would you, would you like us to go ahead and receive your estimate of needs with that one per change and then you can send it to Cassie?
Yep. Second.
Alright, you got a motion? No, Paul made the motion. Joe seconded to receive the FY twenty-five, twenty-six estimate of needs for District Three, uh, with the one change being removing the forty-five thousand dollars from line five, five, oh, nine, five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ayes, have it.
Were you last?
Yeah.
But not least?
That's probably least.
You have this moved page playing around. It's the last page of his budget. Oh, yeah.
That's it. Any big changes? I gotta get out of here.
Well, there, there, there's personnel changes. That's just a few.
I know where you got to.
Alright, we got one left. Okay, it is, looks like two from special revenues. So it's all the way there's back. Everybody ready? Alright, Brandon, it's like anybody's ready?
Alright, so, uh, we are asking for an increase this year of one ninety-nine thousand, three seventy-three. Uh, last year, we asked for an increase, um, uh, not much of what we did after, I think about eighty, eighty-seven thousand, trying to remember a budget. Some of that to MIS, um, some of it for other, you know, things. Um, the majority of the increase is, 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 is in our staffing. So, um, we're asking for raises for, um, several what we call specialty positions. We did some movement around this year, all within the bureaus, as you can see. Like, for example, administrative cell has twenty-seven people. Guild services still has seventy-nine people. Judicial still has sixty-five. But we did move some people around in those divisions. So that's why you see salary fluctuations there. Uh, but we are asking for, um, potential increases for, uh, some of the specialty type positions, like, for example, investigators who, um, you know, some of the surrounding areas pay quite a bit more for some of the specialty positions, our records and warrants, uh, you know, supervisor, you know, just various things. And, you know, we, I, I try to do a good job with, um, putting all the individual positions, um, in a, you know, in, in a lineup in a way that's not all lumped together. Um, two of those, you know, ten, eleven thousand, eleven thousand dollars of that, twelve thousand dollars of that, uh, raise increases for the sheriff and under sheriff of their raises, um, that would happen. Um, uh, we are asking for the general counsel possibly to be put into, um, our general fund. Um, you know, it happened to be coincident with District One, the way it worked out, but, um, we were going to hire a, a general counsel, like I said, just happened to work out. But, you know, the way that our needs are, uh, with the general counsel is something we've needed ever since the divorce from the jail. And so we are really thankful to get that right now. We are paying for that special revenues, but, uh, we would love to see that come over to general counsel or come over to general fund. Uh, most importantly though, the two positions for process and travel. Uh, the reason though, I'm asking for those is because, uh, the last time that the county, uh, we asked for two positions in twenty twenty-one, the county, uh, provided those to us and that was great. Um, during that year, uh, we were, we, uh, served eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight papers in twenty twenty-one. The last time the county gave us two employees for that area. Um, that's gone up every year. And last year in twenty twenty-four, it's up to sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three. And that's done by functionally ten people. So, you know, you can kind of do the math on that. That's an increase of fifty-three percent, and we're already on pace to be higher than that for twenty twenty-five. The judiciary is spitting out tons of process things, uh, you know, as it relates to evictions, as it relates to, um, you know, anything that comes out of the core system, that's what this group does. So we would, um, if we had a hierarchy of priorities, that's those, those two positions would certainly be it. So that's the, uh, that's the ask for the position increase. The benefits is just, you know, the three hundred fifty-eight thousand dollar increase, that's seventy thousand, four ninety-four, which is only nineteen point six five percent that adds to that. Um, and then the next one, the, the next increase we're asking for is in fuel. Um, you know, the same thing, our, our extradition's, um, and our processes have gotten so much that, you know, we, we are, uh, trying to keep, um, trying to keep that fuel under control. We, with, this is actually only a portion of the fuel. Um, we pay for a, a big, big chunk of the fuel out of our cash accounts that some of the, uh, constitutional stuff are required to do, we do ask for it out of general fund. So, and there's been a, like I said, there's been a significant, significant increase in the number of travel we're having, that we're having to do as it relates to the judiciary and the, and the civil. So, um, so the overall ask is four hundred ninety-nine thousand higher, um, for our area. And again, it's explained in, uh, some raises to reposition. for our area. And again, it's explained in some raises, three positions and then in fuel. So other than that, we don't ask for any capital. We try to pay for that all out of cash if we can. And we don't ask for any travel. We try to pay for all that out of cash if we can. So we are trying to do our part on, on the travel capital stuff, but that's, that's pretty much it. Happy to answer any questions or provide anything you might need.
Any questions? None? All right, and then is there a motion to receive the estimated needs for the F Y twenty-five, twenty-six general fund sheriff's estimate of needs?
Second.
And a motion is second? All those in favor say aye. Any o, any abstentions? All right, ayes have it. All right, um, let's see here. Was there anything else anybody wants to revisit? It's on the agenda. If not, any citizens wish to participate? Same none? More comments, District?
No, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, my last day will be next Wednesday. I was approached by taking the associate vice president position at U C O.
Wow, congratulations.
Serving on BET, in particular, management and educational. Appreciate everybody that's on here and the atmosphere in which we work together. It's impressive, so I appreciate it.
District three, congratulations and wish you well. Come back and visit.
My cam decor, I'm sure. Fisher? Port clerk?
You'll hate the track.
Yeah, yeah. Jason, Godspeed. Been a very valuable resource on this committee. We'll miss you. Appreciate all your input and we'll miss your extensions.
I'll leave the amendment with it in there.
Well, I already have the, the county constitution, so.
I have something to add. Somebody used to work here and they said you're forgetting one thing on the meeting that the DA told us to do it, but. So I do have that.
You have an amendment update. All right, is there a motion to? You want to recess? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
A motion second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thanks everyone.